The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Good evening, everyone. This is the February 22, 2021 Westminster City Council meeting. At this time, we will call the meeting to order and ask you, please, if you will, to join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ms. Parker, we can start with the roll call, please.
Certainly. Mayor Attison.
Yes.
Councillor Demont.
Present.
Mayor Protem Sights. Councillor Seymour.
Here.
Councillor Scully. I'm sorry, Councillor Scully, I didn't hear you. But I see ya.
I apologize. I was double-named. I am here.
No, no problem. Councillor Smith.
Present.
And Councillor Bowles.
Here.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to the next item on the January 9th item 3A. Move along to the minutes of the February 8, 2021 meeting and get over here. Could have a motion for the minutes. That would be great. The site. Go ahead, Councillor. Mayor Protem, go ahead.
No problem. I move to approve the minutes of the February 8, 2021 meeting as presented.
All right. Councillor Seymour.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify with aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Moving on to item four, presentations. We have none scheduled for tonight, so we'll move to item five, our public comment. Ms. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We received one written comment, which was included in the packet this afternoon and updated, as well as sent directly to the city council. We had one person who requested to speak live during the meeting, but has subsequently withdrawn that request. And then we have one voicemail, which we will play for you at this time. Ed, if you could queue up our voicemail comment.
My name is William McCann. I would like to address city council's lack of a statement concerning the urban violence of 2020. Do you not view it as important? Your inaction on this significant issue only reinforces an impression of city council bias. So what happened in our cities last year and why was it important for council to weigh in on the events? Last summer, businesses were burned, looted. There was general street violence. Residents were terrorized in the streets. Federal government facilities were attacked. There were coordinated waves of attacks and homicide. Rioters used hammers, hatchets, Molotov cocktails, explosives, paint bombs laced with caustic substances, some of which were thrown at police. Similar events occurred in many, many cities across our nation. There were eight months of disturbances. In Denver, our capital was attacked and defaced. While many peaceful protests occurred, many of them led to violence. And only a small number of people caused the violence and chaos. Primary actors in 2020 disturbances were two groups commonly known as Antifa and Black Lives Matter, BLM. Antifa calls for anarchy and chaos and is composed of violent extremists, anarchists, and communists. Their explicit goal is the destruction of liberal democracies. BLM founders are avowed Marxists, and that group calls for a totalitarian state. Demonstration and violence were cheered on by insightful and divisive politicians, such as Vice President Harris, Speaker Pelosi, Representative Maxine Waters, and others. But our city council failed to condemn the violence or the cheerleaders. Now, government alone has policing power. And if all lawlessness has not reigned in, that's all lawlessness, and some in government are actually cheering on uprisings. What are we, the citizens, to do? What are we to think? How would you feel if a firefighter stood by and watched your home burn to the ground but saved that of your neighbor? Double standards are unacceptable in our society. After all, we are a nation of laws. One goal of the 2020 violence was to delegitimize law enforcement. In the absence of a city council statement condemning the violence and hateful ideologies of the aforementioned groups hurts our local police. Mr. Mayor, you should have led city council to support law enforcement by condemning these unlawful acts and attacks on the police. This is your legacy which is being laid out here. Once out of power, you will not be able to change that which is written or not written, that which is done or not done. And councillors, please note that any one vocal councillor, if a supporter or sympathizer of these radical groups, can duly affect, unduly affect, public policy. You can exert enormous political pressure on the police and residents by action and inaction. And in general, inaction and lack of fairness will eventually lead to erosion of the norms of society that lead us towards more violence instead of discussion. You need to demonstrate some political will and do your part to halt the spread of this social cancer. You have all sworn to uphold the Constitution. Your oath obliges you to take a stand against all violence. You should strongly oppose those that sow chaos and anarchy. One can only hope that you are sickened by the events of 2020 and mourn the loss of 25 lives. Most of us assemble and protest peaceably, reject violence and calls for uprisings. We respect the property of the private property, public property, and we respect the diversity of political views. Please support the majority of Westminster residents by condemning the ideals and actions of those which permitted the chaos and violence in 2020. Thank you for your.
Ms. Parker, do you have any others?
No, sir. That concludes the public comment for this evening.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item. Mr. Tripp, this is a report of city officials, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem and city council. I just have one item this evening. You know, myself and the city attorney endeavor to not surprise you with things, but we did get a call after 5:30 this evening from the attorney for the developer of QuickTrip. The request from Carolyn White was to reconsider the denial of the QuickTrip PDP on February 8. Why am I bringing this up this late? In consultation with the city attorney, I think we ought to hear the attorney's legal advice concerning this issue. And it's a matter that I think should be discussed in executive session because of the nature of maybe her comments to you. I felt it was important to bring this to you because it was brought to me even so late. I apologize for that. But we're dealing with this in the best way we can to make sure you're kept informed of this request. And myself and the city attorney, Kristen Decker, this evening are prepared to go into an executive session to talk about that. Let me read to you what she said. "We are prepared to discuss this request in the exec session to confer with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice concerning tonight's request for reconsideration pursuant to Colorado revised statutes 2464024B and sections 111, 3C, 3, and 8 of the Westminster Municipal Code." I'm certain that she's prepared to tell you more about that. But I want to assure everybody in the public that whatever happens with this, any sort of a change to the council's position on this would be considered in a public session later on. Because of the nature of it, I do think you ought to have some legal advice from your attorney in an executive session tonight.
This Decker.
That's all I have.
Sorry.
Yeah. City Attorney Decker, do you know where on the agenda you'd like to hold this so the council elect to go into exec session?
Kristen, you're muted.
Starting off great, huh? Um, I would recommend it either go under Old Business or it could go as soon as now, if that's what council desires.
What I propose to do is, I have no problem with us doing this, but I think I'd like to get our scheduled business out of the way since this came in so late and do this under item 11, because there's nothing scheduled there for tonight. Then we can, if we run a little bit late, we can deal with the post-meeting items as all. Is there any objection to doing that on item 11 or Old Business from council? I'm seeing none. Ms. Decker, can you send me the verbiage through email of what you would want for the motion and copy the council on it? And then we'll figure it out. Mr. Demont, I'll come back to you for the motion.
Yes, I'll do that now.
All right. Thank you. Or Mr. Tripp, do you have anything else for reported officials?
No, I don't. And I, and Kristen, I both thank you much for your understanding of this matter, but we both felt it was best to bring it to you even as late as the hour is. And thank you, Kristen, for your immediate, quick work on this subject. Appreciate it very much.
All right. We'll move on to the city council comments and see where we go from there. Councillor Seymour, I have you up first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to report that this last Thursday, I had an opportunity to sit in on the annual update from Growing Home. And that was our outstanding parkers in the city that have provided great relief to our residents during the pandemic. And a big part of hitting the numbers that we've heard throughout the meetings as far as the thousands, almost three-quarter of a million pounds of food, the thousands of hours of volunteer work, and how appreciative the people at Growing Home, and I'm sure those people that they serve, of their partnership with the city, and how creative staff was in coming to their assistance, using the Mac as a storage facility for their now outgrown pantry from their current location, and what an outstanding partnership that has been during our COVID times. So appreciate what they talked about as far as their partnership with the city and also appreciate what they have done for our residents. That's all I have for.
All right. Thank you, sir. Ms. Councillor Scully, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Thursday, Councillor Seymour and I had a JEDC meeting. And it was mostly just updates from the board and conversations around our MMA and concerning customs and trade and how it is on pause. The main message of the meeting was really, they are anxious to get back to work. So businesses all over are suffering and they are anxious for COVID to come to a close. So praying for lots of vaccines. Please, if you have an opportunity, get your vaccine and wear your masks and shop local. And let's get back to business as soon as we can.
Councillor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The week of February 8, I had the opportunity to listen in to the inclusivity board and hear what they are up to. A great group of folks. So I wanted to thank them and Councillor Demont for allowing me to just hear what they have going on in the city and what they're working on for us on council. And last Thursday, I had the opportunity to sit on the North Metro Arts Alliance Board. And much like January's meeting, this meeting was specifically to dive into financials and how the planning of events will pan out for the remaining of this year. They did have carryover dollars from last year since they weren't able to do anything in person. So they're looking at instituting those dollars into this year's and then creatively working out how we meet in person and/or virtually with these events as we don't know when or where that we can start meeting in person. So they did a lot of creative work on that. And that's all my updates for now. Thanks.
All right. Councillor Bowles.
I think, Mr. Mayor, I'll be really brief, but last Wednesday, the Environmental Advisor Board met. They normally would meet on the 24th. This Wednesday, however, because we have the onboarding, they moved it to a week earlier. They talked about working with HOA. So they're moving forward on one of their goals for this year, which is working with HOA, HOAs throughout our city for water conservation initiatives and how to get that information out and how to support them and that. So they began their work on that, and they're going to work with Drew Beckworth, who's our water conservation manager. So they're going to invite him to a meeting, upcoming meeting. And then they also talked about having additional input on the oil and gas regulations. So it has been confirmed they'll have another opportunity to see what changes have gone into that ordinance for oil and gas. And they'll have another shot at looking at that before it comes to us. So they talked about those items at their meeting. And then I want to encourage everyone on our boards and commissions to attend this week's onboarding session. I think it's so important that members of our boards and commissions get an opportunity to meet with one another, meet staff, meet the liaisons from other boards and commissions. I just think it's a really great opportunity. And I want to thank all of, anyone and everyone who's worked on this initiative. I think it's really important for our city to empower our boards and commissions and give them the best tools to do the best job they can to advise us or help us in however they can. So and then we also have the quasi-judicial who do their own thing and allowing them to do it in the best way they can. So I think it's really important, and I hope to see everyone there, online, that is. So thank you. That's all.
Mayor Protem Sights.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll briefly go over the events that I went to this week. I did go on Thursday. I attended, along with Councillor Scully, a presentation on a new co-op opportunity for solar energy in Westminster. So this allows Westminster residents to enjoy group purchasing power for the soft costs of solar. And so really great. It's both for the panels for storage, battery storage for solar. So if you already have panels, you can look into it for solar, for storage, and also for EV charging. So I want to say thank you to our staff for always being innovative. So I want to say thank you to our staff for always being innovative. Obviously, this is, you know, not expensive for the city, but it's a way for people to use that, those economies of scales to bring down the cost. So I thought that was really wonderful. On Friday, I did have, I'm on the Strategic Plan Committee for NADA where we planned the next agenda. It's going to be a packed one because transportation is really going to, again, it's like Groundhog's Day, but it is again going to be a big issue this year. The mayor and I and I think multiple other members of staff or not staff council today attended a meeting that was hosted by CCAT, CCI, CML, and a whole lot of other local organizations inviting the governor, Shoshana Lou, the different members of our house and our state reps and our state senate to talk about transportation and a proposed legislation that has not been released yet and kind of what the worries and goals and hopes of local government was. It'll, the devil will be in the details, but I do think that there's a lot of momentum for a bipartisan approach to handle it this year. So that is important because that's imperative for our state. I, along with I think most people, were horrified and worried to see the extreme cold temperatures that folks in Texas had to endure last month or last week. And was horrified that a lack of investment in infrastructure led to such really personal dire consequences. It's something that's unimaginable. And so that's why I am committed to sustainability, to climate action and to investing in our infrastructure. These are issues that everyone says are global, but the impact is felt in our hometowns. So I just wanted to say my thoughts, my prayers go out to the folks in Texas who had to endure last week's cold temperature and the loss of power and the loss of water. And I wanted to reaffirm my commitment to always making sure we're forward-thinking here in Westminster.
Counselor Demond.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quickly, I would share the sentiment of Mayor Pro Tim Sights on praying for Texas. I have some employees and a lot of business partners down there and I know it hit people hard in a various manner, a different way. Some as much as physical harm and some just really adding to an already rough economy that we've seen over the last 12 months. So those folks certainly could use a break in our prayers. I did, as Counselor Smith mentioned, we had inclusivity board. I always appreciate that group's hard work to make sure that Westminster is inclusive. Talked a lot about what kind of outreach programs they're going to do. Obviously, COVID has shifted the way that we're able to be with each other. And so they're continuing to focus on how they can push inclusivity in the city. The other meeting that I attended was CML Policy Committee meeting, which was with Mayor Pro Tim Sights, who chairs that committee. One of the things that I personally stuck out to me that I would ask citizens to look at is a bill being pushed by the ACLU. And it's around not jailing what certain levels misdemeanor and some low-level felonies. And I think there's some concerning things about that bill, in my opinion. As an individual and a resident, I would ask that residents look at that bill. I don't think that we want things in Colorado that have been a lot of what we've seen with COVID, where the jails aren't allowed to keep people because of COVID. And so you kind of get a revolving door situation where people get arrested for things like auto theft and then they're back out stealing other cars. I understand that not everybody needs to be jailed. I do believe that we could do some reforms in that area about who goes to jail and what kind of punishments there are, as well as being able to address people who maybe don't have money for bond because of their personal situation. There's ways to address that without risking people who should be off the streets being off the street. So I'd ask you to look at that and if it concerns you as much as it does me, reach out to your state reps and, you know, share that concern. And that is my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I wanted to take a moment to recognize a couple of things. Today, the President of the United States set aside a short period of time, a moment of silence. Over the weekend, we surpassed 500,000 people who have died because of complications of COVID. And this number continues to move forward as it continues to grow. He's also ordered all flags lowered to half staff for the next five days. So for just a moment, I would ask you to pause for a short moment of silence, just to remember all those who we've lost. Whether you have someone that personally affects you, we know we've lost some of our staff members here in the city. So we want to continue to think of them and their families. So I'll ask you to pause for just a moment. All right, thank you. The only other thing I wanted to recognize, one of our youth advisory panel members, Rachel Cocoon, is the chair of the panel this year. And she, like many others, was recognized as a finalist for the Daniel Swans Scholarship and her interview was on Tuesday. The applications originally came in, over 2,000 young men and women who applied from across four states. We did interviews on Tuesday with 320. The 230 successful people who will get their scholarships, we announced at the end of March. And we wish her the best of luck. I unfortunately did not get to interview her. I had another group. But I know she is very deserving and has an outstanding record, both academically and in the community as well. And is a graduating senior this year from North Glen High School. So we recognize Rachel and the great work she and the other panel members have done last year and going forward in this year. With no other comments tonight, we'll move on to Item 8A, the consent agenda. There was no one who asked to have this removed, so I'll go on to the next counselor. Counselor Seymour, I believe you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt the consent agenda, Item 8A.
Counselor Scully.
I second the motion.
Yeah, we'll motion in a second. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker, if you will, please.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Counselor Demond.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
And Counselor Bowles.
Yes.
All right, thank you, counsel. Motion passes on a 7-0 vote. Moving on to the Item 9, appointments and resignations. We have none for tonight. Moving on to Item 10A, this is council's bill number six, 2021 appropriations for the general fund capital improvement in parks. And we'll move on to Mayor Pro Tim Sights. And the second will be Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to pass Counselors Bill Number Six on first reading, amending 2021 appropriations for the general capital improvement in parks, open space and trails funds to unify open space capital project budgets.
Counselor Scully.
I second the motion.
All right, moving on for questions. I believe, Mayor Pro Tim, you had a question?
I did. I was hoping a member of staff could please kind of go over historically what we have done, why we went through the GCIF, you know, and had the separate accounts, kind of the historical reasonings and why we're switching to doing it all through the post account. If someone could just walk me through that, that would help me a little bit. And I also think it would help our residents. I recognize throughout the staff report, this was listed as a best practice for transparency, which makes sense to me. But we care a lot about our open space and parks in Westminster. And when there's a change, I think everyone wants to understand exactly what it means and where those dollars, assurance that the dollars are still going to the right things.
Mr. Tripp.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Sights, for your question. And thank you for giving me some advance so staff could be prepared this evening. I appreciate that a lot. Assistant City Manager and Director of Policy and Budget, Chris Lindsay, is going to take a first attempt here to provide answers to your questions. If we get into, you know, policy measures specific, we may ask to bring some answers back to you on that, but I think Chris can handle most of what you referred to there. Chris, go ahead, please.
Good evening, City Council, and thank you for the question, Mayor Pro Tim Sights. First, I would just like to clarify for those that are listening. The action that's recommended tonight does not recommend changing any existing project levels or project types or funding levels or any goals of previously appropriated capital projects. This is purely administrative and a best practice and a continuous improvement effort, to be honest. There have been increased and sustained interest in open space activities of late, and we believe that this change allows for more financial transparency. I would start out by saying in the past, things were much simpler. There were fewer restricted revenue streams with fewer city funds that were involved. In 2020 and years prior, we budgeted a transfer from the Parks, Open Space and Trails Fund to the General Capital Improvement Fund to pay for post-capital projects. I would speculate that there was likely a desire to budget all non-utility fund capital projects in one place. Additionally, finances were simpler at that time, like I mentioned. And there've been many changes since then. We've added more funds. We budget capital on other funds. So last year, with the proposal and adoption of the 21 budget, staff recommended to council the implementation of a number of best practices. One of those was a change in financial management practice. So all new post-tax revenues and all new post expenditure appropriations will be fully budgeted and accounted for in the post fund. Let me say that again in simpler terms. All post revenues and all post expenses in one fund. As anticipated, with the approval of the 2021 budget, administrative follow-up is recommended tonight for projects appropriated in previous years. Again, we consider this to be a best practice. It unifies all those post activities into one city fund. Through this action, staff believes we will enhance transparency and reduce complexity with financial management and reporting of restricted post-tax dollars. We believe this will allow us to better tell the city's story about restricted funds, which are currently contained in GCIF. This would also allow us to better tell the story about the lack of unrestricted funds and GCIF to pay for items like streets maintenance. If this is not approved, post-funded projects will remain in two separate funds until existing balances and the General Capital Improvement Fund are fully expended or those projects are closed. And that period of time could span multiple years. Authorizing this budget unification will shorten the period when post-funded projects remain in two separate funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing the question. And thank you, Mr. Lindsay, for that detailed explanation. I do applaud this move. Over the seven years I've been on council, I've seen us consistently wanting to make the budget a document that is more easily digestible by the community. Because this is, the budget is the affirmative. It's the affirmation of what our policy principles are, and we want people to be able to read this document and know what we value. And everything we do to simplify it and to increase transparency, I think, is of the utmost importance and of value. So thank you very much. I appreciate you taking the time to make that more clear for me and for anyone listening.
Counselor Demond.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm curious. The post fund, it has a sunset to it, correct? As far as like that, the post, the tax?
That's correct.
So how does that affect this change? When, if we hit that sunset? What does that logistically do?
I'm honestly not certain. That's a really good question. We would still likely receive Adams County Open Space and Jefferson County Open Space tax dollars, which we would, I think, out in the future, we would propose to continue placing those in a post fund. If I recall correctly off the top of my head, that tax sun sets in 2032. So it's a little ways out. And I hope we would discuss removing the sunset or extending that in the time in between.
And then talk to me about, if I miss how this fits together, I apologize. I'm trying to understand this. So with additional funds, like say if we had a project we wanted to take out of the general fund, would then there be like a transfer into the post fund in order to fund that? Or how would a capital improvement that we were going to fund out of the general fund happen with this new structure?
So a post project out of the general capital improvement fund, am I following you correctly?
Yeah, I'm trying to understand. So say you don't have enough money for a project that would normally be funded out of this fund. And we wanted to take general funds to fund that, then how would that actually go down?
Thank you.
Would it just get transferred into the post fund or?
Thank you. I think we would likely appropriate that fund and appropriate that project, excuse me, in multiple funds and pay for the expenses out of both funds and potentially titigate an asset or whatever in the post fund afterwards. We could transfer that fund in. We would likely want to keep them separate since we're putting those restricted funds separate now. But I think there's multiple mechanisms we could look at for funding a project like that if there was a desire to use general fund for it. I don't, let me just say, I don't think this would eliminate the ability to do that.
Okay, thank you very much for answering my questions.
Any other comments or questions from council? I'm seeing none. Ms. Parker, this is council's bill number six. It's a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Demond.
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Bowles.
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison.
Yes. I need to confirm, Counselor Demond, if I understood you correctly, you were a no vote?
Correct, sir.
All right, thank you. In that case, council's bill number six passes on a 6-1 vote. Moving on to Item 10B, Resolution Number Two. Whoever makes this, please remember that there was a modified motion that was sent to you later today. So if you don't have the corrected version, please pull that up. Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Two, approving the, an intergovernmental agreement for funding of Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail crossings be paid from the General Capital Improvement or Parks Open Space and Trails Fund.
Counselor Smith.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Are there any questions on Resolution Number Two? Counselor Bowles.
Yeah, just quickly, I think I said last time we talked about this, I'm very excited for this moving forward. I think it's an outstanding project. I just want to confirm that our Parks Recreation Libraries and Open Space Advisory Board did have a chance to look at this and did recommend. I think our packet said they did. I just want to confirm that. That they're in favor of this intergovernment agreement.
Director Gink, or Gink, excuse me. Would you please come on, Jason? I think you're right, counselor, but Jason, would you please come on?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Appreciate the question. The answer is yes. Both the previous board, Parks Recreation Libraries, Open Space Advisory Board, in existence when the project started, provided a letter of support for this project. And just recently, our current board and board members here about a week or two ago, provided a second letter of support for this action. And both of those items are attached in the public packet. Thank you.
Good. Well, thank you for that answer. And I thought I saw that in our packet. I just want to confirm that. Thank you for that answer. I was glad they had a chance to look at it and also were in support of this project. And I thank them for their work on this. Thank you.
Any other comments from council? I'm seeing none. Ms. Parker, this is Resolution Number Two for a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Bowles.
Yes.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
And Counselor Demond.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. That motion passes on a 7-0 vote. Moving on to the next item. This is Resolution Number Three. Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number Three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number Three, establishing the 2021 calendar year interest rate at 5.25% for non-city-funded public improvement recovery contracts and 2.53% for city-funded public improvements.
Mayor Pro Tem sites.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any questions or comments on this motion? I see none. Ms. Parker, we're moving to Item 10C, Resolution Number Three, as a roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Bowles.
Yes.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Counselor Demont.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem sites.
Yes.
Thank you, Council. This motion also passes on a seven oh vote. Moving on to the next item on the general, Item 10D. Mayor Pro Tem sites.
Thank you. I move, based on the recommendation of the city manager, to determine that the public interest will be best served by authorizing the city manager to execute a sole source agreement with Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc., to provide collection of pavement distress data services for the city's pavement management system in amount not to exceed $350,000 over the next five years, subject to annual appropriation.
Counselor Scully.
My second.
I have a motion in a second for Item 10D. Are there any questions or comments from council? Mayor Pro Two.
I just want to say briefly, when a lot of people think of local government, one of the first things they think about is filling potholes and maintaining roads. And we've seen consistently in our city surveys that people care a lot about this issue. But the cold hard truth is we have limited dollars to prioritize. And so making sure that we're accurately prioritizing these, cataloging them, and doing the very best with the taxpayers' dollars to maintain this vital infrastructure is really great. And so I just want to say thank you to the team for consistently wanting to improve, looking for ways to do it, and setting a high standard. So thank you so much.
Other comments from council? I see none. Ms. Parker, this is Item 10D as a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Bowles.
Yes.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Counselor Demont.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem sites.
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Thank you, Council. This motion passes on a seven oh vote. Moving on to Item 10E. Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to execute an engineering design services contract with Alfred Benash and Company for the West 100th Avenue and Sim Street intersection improvement project in an amount not to exceed $179,693 plus an additional $40,121 in contingency for a total authorized amount of $219,814.
Mayor Pro Two.
Second.
Okay. At this time, I'll turn to the council. Counselor Demont, you have a question?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'm curious, as reading through this and looking at the diagrams given, it sounds like part of the design work is going to be for a roundabout. Do we have any idea exactly how that roundabout's going to be laid out? Is it going to be closer to 100th on the south part of 100th or where it's more north on 100th? Or is that 100th going to be realigned? How is that actually going to work? And will it connect to both parts of 100th? I'm just trying to logistically get my mind around how that's going to be laid out.
Counselor Demont, thank you for the question. The design work that we're asking to have you authorize tonight, we'll answer those questions. I'm certain that our engineers probably have some idea as to what they believe. But, you know, those things are all then verified through calculations and looking at engineering standards. But I think that would come as a part of a package at the end that would be in front of you for construction. We'd have a chance to explain that to you. If you'd like to provide some feedback on that, we'd be happy to hear that. Or you have questions about that as we go into the discussion with the engineers, that's always helpful.
I appreciate that, and I kind of wondered if that would be your answer. I guess the reason I bring it up, even understanding that, you know, obviously they had to design this still, is I've got some amount of concern about that. That's a really busy intersection. I know that's laid out in the packet, and that's part of the reason we're doing this. So I think that there is some concern in the community that maybe this won't address it. But I imagine, maybe you could tell me at least, so the public understands, as part of this process, there's at least been some preliminary work to know that that's going to be a good solution for that area. And that's why roundabout is spelled out in the packet.
I would, I'm going to ask Dave Donning to come on, but I would say, I wouldn't say that that's an absolute at this point. I think the engineering work will provide that answer. But I think there was a desire to provide you some insight as to what's being looked into. But Director Dave Donning, would you want to come on and have one of your traffic engineers come on and answer this question? Buy a little more insight, please.
Hello. Good evening. This is Seth Plas, Capital Projects Administrator for Department of Community Development. I'm the project manager for this design contract. One of the things that we asked consultants to provide is some options for how this intersection would lay out. One of the options was it's what's called a peanut roundabout. So it kind of looks like a peanut. It's like a figure eight roundabout. And it potentially works out pretty well for this offset alignment where we wouldn't potentially need a lot of church ditch relocation work. So that is what we're going to, if this contract is approved, have the engineer lay out and make sure that it fits for this intersection. Because I certainly share your concern, Counselor Demont.
Great. Now, that's very helpful, and I think that the public, if they're listening, would appreciate that. I guess I would just ask you to continue to be mindful of the fact that there is a lot of concerns about the safety of the traffic on 100th and Sims there. I know that we've had multiple accidents over the years. I mean, I've lived over here my whole life. So that's always been kind of a dangerous turn or whatever you want to call it right there. So I appreciate the fact that we're working on it, and I appreciate you giving me as much information as you have at this point. Thank you.
Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment, too, that having lived in this section, living in this section, that this intersection and its misalignment, I was very happy to see this in the packet tonight. And I do know that we've had loss of life, people going into that church ranch area into the ditch. And so very supportive of us looking at what the best options for this is. As in many parts of our city, the traffic flow has increased and it's near our dog park. And so that are very large increases on that, too. So I'm sure, and then the people entering into Stanley Lake for recreation will be happy about some updates for that, too. But keeping safety in mind, I'm very happy to vote in favor of this tonight.
Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too am very pleased to see this location for discussion tonight. The questions that I had are similar to Counselor Demont's in, but more or less, why a roundabout and not a traffic light? What warrants a traffic light versus a roundabout? Because sometimes roundabouts can be very dangerous.
So there are national standards that provide the warrants that an intersection would meet to, what warrant a traffic signal. Volume of traffic, accidents, proximity to schools, things like that. Due to the offset nature of this intersection, installing a traffic signal and moving forward with a four-way intersection would require us to align 100th Avenue, so the west leg and the east leg. And that could be costly as far as work that we would have to do with the church ditch. In addition, installing traffic signals is, as probably most of you are aware, expensive as far as construction goes. So it would absolutely add a couple hundred thousand dollars to the construction budget as well as costly operations and maintenance through the years. With a roundabout, you really don't have that maintenance as far as electricity contracting for, to maintain the light if it goes down. And in this situation, could provide a safer route and intersection for vehicles, pedestrians and bicyclists.
Okay. And would those bicyclists share then the same route that vehicular movement would be, they shared?
That does happen in some roundabouts. 100th Avenue is a pretty active bicycle route. Preliminary, in the conceptual layout, we would look at a separated bicycle and pedestrian walk to get through the intersection.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much.
Mayor Pro Two.
Thank you so much, and thank you to Mr. Plas for answering so many questions of my colleagues and for this staff recommendation tonight. I just wanted to very briefly explain why I'm going to be voting in support of this. I think this is a great opportunity for us, not only to improve pedestrian safety, bicycle safety. As a lot of my colleagues have mentioned, this is an intersection that is problematic as it stands right now. But also included in the staff report, this gets us to 75% engineering and would be a shovel-ready project, which would then make us eligible for federal grants. So really getting us prepared to take advantage of opportunities if they end up presenting themselves. So I just wanted to say thank you for being proactive. I'm going to trust you guys to be the traffic engineers on this, but I do appreciate the stated goals in the staff report, and I agree with them. They match the goals of our council. So thank you so much.
Other comments, council? I see none. Ms. Parker, this is Item 10E. A roll call vote, please.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Bowles.
Yes.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Counselor Demont.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem sites.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
And Counselor Scully.
Yes.
I thank your counsel that moves Item 10E, excuse me, to a seven oh vote. Moving on to the next item, we have a two-part item, Item F1. Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move, based on the recommendations of the city manager, to determine that the public interest will best be served by entering into a one-year sole source agreement with Agency Off Record Incorporated to provide consultant services for the maintenance of the economic development website in the amount of $45,600 with a contingency of 10% for an amount not to exceed $50,160.
Counselor Seymour.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on Item F1? Counselor Demont.
I think maybe Counselor Bowles got in before I did it.
All right, Counselor Bowles.
Thank you, Counselor Demont. Yeah, I was kind of wondering about that. Thank you. Appreciate that. My question on this is, why is this sole, a question I ask a lot. Why is this sole source? This seems to be a subject area or a type of service that could be provided by many, many companies. I know why we do it on certain occasions, and we have that in our staff report in our packets each week, but why is this sole source? I don't understand why we didn't put this out to bed. Can someone explain that for me? Certainly, Counselor Bowles. Yes, certainly. Staff from the Economic Development Department has been working on this. Jenny Grafton, please.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp. Yes, and Counselor Bowles, that's a very good question. In this case, it is somewhat of a unique circumstance in that we have been working with this same company going back to 2017. So they built and constructed the entire website. If we were shifting over now for ongoing maintenance to a new company, it would likely cost us more because there would be some retrofitting and going back. Additionally, Agency Off Record has been involved in citywide website development. So there's value in that consistency between economic development and the city's webpage as a whole, even down to fine details like fonts and color palettes and things of that nature. So that is the reason for the recommendation to continue with Agency Off Record.
And then just as a follow-up, how long have they had the contract with, that we're voting on tonight? For this work?
We do, we do annual maintenance contracts. Typically, just as you can see from the amount here, the amount falls below the threshold that warrants coming to council. The main reason that we're before you tonight is because we're also seeking additional work with Agency Off Record to develop the second item, and that amount combined puts us over that threshold.
Okay, thank you. So are we talking four or five years with this company on time track number one?
It's been a renewal contract, but yes, we go back to 2017, continuous work with AOR.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. So I had a question earlier that staff did answer about analytics around the Westminster historic site that was launched a couple of years back. And so I'm curious, this is a renewed contract for analytics and maintenance, which I'm pretty well aware of, called a curiosity, since this is what I do for a living. Why weren't they doing the analytics before? And is this substantially more than what our maintenance contract was before? Were we not under a maintenance contract for that website prior? Maybe you could talk to us a little bit about that.
Sure, Counselor Demont. I can elaborate on that. So prior to this, our maintenance contract with AOR included analytics that were just site-wide. So we had some good data on the economic development website as a whole. The intent had been that as these individual landing pages were created for the downtown historic Westminster and Westminster Station, once those were all prepared, we would amend the contract to then include specified analytics for those three pages. So that is part of this package. It was not the previous year's maintenance contract.
Can you maybe also elaborate for me? I'm looking at kind of what the monthly rate is. So we're somewhere between 3,800 and over, maybe around more like 4,500, depending on if it hits a high level. What's the amount of changes that we're doing to these sites that we have that kind of burn rate month to month?
Certainly. So it may be reassuring. This contract amount actually represents about half of where they initially proposed services for this coming year. So AOR certainly has the capability to go in more frequently, do more aggressive analytics. We felt that based on budget, this was a more appropriate level. It provided quarterly updates on things that we know don't change that frequently. So we really started to reduce the regularity with which they are going in. I want to clarify, too, the reason that we build a contingency into a contract of this nature is because there are certainly times, and 2020 was a good example, where we had additional needs that came on as a result of the pandemic. And so we asked them to make some modifications to help us be more responsive in an emergency sort of fashion. We don't anticipate as much of that in 21, but certainly want to give ourselves that capability to be responsive to the community in that way.
Sure. I mean, that makes sense, but I guess one of the things I'm curious, I mean, we have a pretty robust IT department. Do we do any of the changes on our websites in-house, or do we fully rely on AOR?
That's an excellent question. So I actually have Caroline Joy, who is our marketing coordinator. That's an excellent question, so I actually have Caroline Joy, who is our marketing coordinator online tonight as well, if we want to go into greater detail. So there are quite a bit of updates that Caroline handles for us in house. So she is within economic development and this website, of course, is specific to the department. She also works very closely with. The IT department and with our communications group to ensure that coordination across the two platforms. So we have a number of places where the city website links over to economic development or economic development links over to the city. And that work is all done internally.
Okay, great, I guess the last, that's sufficient for that question. The only other question I have is is kind of why now with with the new with this, the portion of this that's the new site. You know, is what is the driver for it right now? I know we're, you know, obviously tight like everybody after twelve months of pandemic. So maybe you could tell me the value of that at this point.
Sure, so just to clarify, the the second contract, the Westminster Station landing page is is the question?
Yes.
Okay, um, yes, so the anticipation had always been that all three of those would be done. We put that that particular item on the back burner, it was it was really planned for action last year. But for staff was quite busy with with other work for the pandemic and it was not the highest priority budget wise. So it's why it's coming back now. And I think this will be a wonderful conversation to have next week when we do a TOD update for council. But there is a considerable amount of activity taking place in that neighborhood now, including. Social and event items coming forward, and that's really what these these sort of special character landing pages. Are meant to do is provide that very immediate connection to the community to encourage participation and engagement.
Totally understood, and I guess that kind of, and maybe we'll get more next week, but I mean, that's another piece of it is with, I mean, we can't even meet in person right now. So I mean, understanding that, you know, I know that's more of a long term thing, so. I do look forward to the the presentation next week, but thank you for answering my questions.
Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Grafton, most of my. Questions were answered by Counselor Demott's questions, but some of them. Kind of piggyback off of it, but one of the questions I had was data as a whole and the landing pages that was mostly answered. But is there an ability to have have? The Agency Off Record as a host agency and then we maintain? And I don't know if that's maybe a question for Caroline Joy, but is there any capability for us to maintain? For them to just host and take it in in house and we maintain?
Let's say that is somewhat of a hybrid of of what we have now, but Caroline, if you would like to to add more to that, please, please do. Because you're you're in there working in it on a regular basis.
Yeah, definitely, hi, good evening, this is Caroline. And so currently I do all the backend work in in terms of adding content. So I go in and add news stories, any new information, for example, when we were doing COVID resources. However, the maintenance aspect comes into play with the platform it's hosted on, and it's hosted on what's called WordPress. That is different than what is the city's website platform that's hosted on a D N M platform internally by the IT team. This was a website that was inherited, I should say by me in terms of when I came on board five years ago. We already had a separate site for ED, we then went to a WordPress platform. And so that is really what AOR is doing, they are maintaining that they're making sure that. Any of the widgets that are on there are updated and current, any broken links, they're doing S E O. Search engine optimization, et cetera, so they're really doing more like the technical and I'm doing more of the content management. So I'm not calling them on them on a daily basis to add a story or add a photo or anything like that, I am able to handle all that on the backend. Does that answer your question?
Yes, and that's and that's only one person handling the content. The rest is on AOR.
Well, they build a, they built the site in in templates and then I go in and I I go ahead and I add, for example. The words, the pictures, the videos, you name it, anything that's you can see content wise. That is being done by me, anything done on the technical side, say the HTML. Or anything with search engine optimization, that's being done by AOR.
Okay, yeah, okay. The other question I had was, it mentioned that there's possibility of consultant services. What does that look like for, is that them then hosting and maintaining the backend? And I guess I'm confused on that terminology in the report of consultant services.
Oh, Counselor Smith, I'll answer that, that that's really just a term of art that AOR serves the city as a consultant. And as opposed to professional service, which we would apply, say, to an architect or an attorney. So it's it's really just referencing the type of contract that this that we are utilizing.
Great, thank you so much, very, that's understandable now, that's all my questions, thanks.
Any other questions from counsel? Seeing no other questions, Ms. Parker, this is item F one, the roll call vote, please.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Bowles.
No.
Mayor Aggison.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
No.
Mayor Pro Tem sites.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
And Counselor Smith.
No.
Thank you, counsel, that motion passes on a four three vote, moving on to item F two. Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move based on the recommendation of the city manager to determine that the public interest will best be served by entering into a six month. Sole source agreement with Agency Off Record Incorporated to provide consultant services for the development of a dedicated webpage. For the Westminster Station area in the amount of twenty seven thousand one hundred fifty dollars. With a contingency of ten percent for an amount not to exceed twenty nine thousand eight hundred sixty five dollars.
Mr. Se, Counselor Seymour.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for item F two. And looks like Mayor Pro Tem sites.
Thank you, I do have just a quick question, and this is along the same line, I think that Counselor Demott was asking earlier. So adding this additional site, I just wanted to ask from ED's perspective, having a separate downtown site, having a. Separate historic site, have we found those to be useful? Something that the development or business community or investors have wanted to see to understand those more specific sites. Versus having just a page.
Sure, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We we actually have a a portion within the ED website and and have had for some time that's really geared. Very much that sort of developer audience, it's specific links to plans, it's it's on the more technical side. And the addition of these landing pages are really to start talking about promoting the character of place. So it's it's part of our placemaking strategy. And yes, we get we get very good feedback, not only from the community members that have started to utilize that. But also appreciation from the developers, because then it begins to give their projects a place in Westminster.
Understood, and I think we've talked for quite a while. Last multiple years about going to that economic development strategy of placemaking. So I I understand now more how this plays into that. I do want to echo some concerns that Counselor Vols mentioned earlier, which is just, you know, with sole source contracts. It's really helpful for us if we're going to have a sole source contract to really have spelled out both the reasons why and then what. Is competitively, what is competitive in the market for this specific service or industry? You know, one of the reasons we want to do it always is, of course, we want to save the taxpayers' dollars, but we also want to make sure that as. You know, we're procuring things, we're we're fair and equitable to the community, including the business community. So I I do understand where Counselor Vols was coming from on that. Also recognize the efficiencies of of using someone who understands our product. I will be voting yes tonight, but I just wanted to echo that I appreciate his concern.
Other comments from counsel? I'm seeing none, Ms. Parker, this is item F two, is a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, please.
Here, go ahead.
Over the course of the past, at least in my time in this job, several times we presented to council. Best value recommendations on sole source and their impact on why why recommendations are made. It it occurs to me that this current council hasn't heard that presentation, we haven't provided that background, and I'd like to do that. In the near future, we'll provide something in writing to you and then be happy to talk about it further in a study session. But for those on the line that are hearing this, I want to make absolutely sure everybody understands. That we award contracts to folks that provide the best output, the best outcome, reach of these projects. And many times that is not necessarily a low bid, it's what provides the best value for whatever the goal is. But we can get into that further, I'd be happy to provide that information, so. Thank you for your hearing us out on these answers this evening.
All right, before I call the roll, Counselor Demott, you had a question?
A quick comment, sir. I always appreciate this question from Counselor Vols, I know that he he really tries to make sure that we are doing the best thing and I I appreciate that. This one is specifically, I understand the reason why we stick with the same company. That designed the website, so I wanted to just clarify that I'm not voting no on this because of that. I I have a bit of a problem with spending money on it considering the last twelve months and I. In my opinion, haven't seen the value from the the historic Westminster one, nor have I heard that value or appreciation from. That part of town that that we did that site, and so that was specifically why I was asking to see what kind of metrics, and unfortunately, we don't have those for that site. So I just am going to be voting no on it for those reasons, and I wanted to make sure the public understood the reason for my no vote.
Okay, any other comments from counsel? Seeing none, Ms. Parker, let's try the roll call, please.
Mayor Aggison.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
No.
Mayor Pro Tem sites.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
No.
And Counselor Bowles.
Thank you, counsel, again, item F two passes on a four three vote from counsel. We will try to go through our next item, item ten G, the update on the COVID, and then at that point we'll move to. Potential for a executive session. Mr. Trip?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just very briefly, we have only one item this evening, we have Public Works Utilities Director, who also heads up our E O C, Max Kirschbaum, to provide an update on the data related to COVID. Mr. Kirschbaum.
Thank you, Mr. Trip, Mayor and counsel, good evening. Knowing that you have other business tonight, I can keep this fairly brief. The news is somewhat similar to previous weeks, even though. We've switched from the last time we gave this update until tonight, we have switched to a different metric called Dial two point zero. That's why you see in this case, the Adams and the Jefferson County overall current statuses are shown as yellow. The other thing that of note on this slide is that case numbers. Continue to be on a slight downward trend across the state and across both of our counties, so that's a good thing. You'll notice there there are days in which that Jefferson County and or the Adams County. Case number may even appear as blue, meaning under one hundred cases per one hundred thousand over a seven day period. So that that part is good news, being on the edge of being able to go to a a blue status. Possibility continues to exist, and as you look at the percent positive line. You see some of that is fluctuating up and down a little bit. I'm not the public health officer, but I can venture that the reason, the explanation for that is if you lay this side by side. With testing data and you look at what's happening on the trend of testing, we've now had three straight months. Of decreased daily testing going on. So as that number goes down, you're going to see a little bit more variability in that percent positive number. But they have, they have been hovering around the three to five or three to six percent range, which is still pretty good. And if you look at the legend for that metric, yellow is is less than seven point five percent. So that kind of explains where we are with. The the case metrics, if you look at hospitalizations, I'm sorry, let me also interject that on those numbers. As I checked them just before this evening's meeting, again, slightly lower than what you're seeing here on this slide. Not significantly lower, but slightly lower in in each case. On the hospitalizations from Friday shown here at four hundred and seventy. Today, that number is shown as four hundred and forty. And just a reminder with hospitalization number, which, let's go ahead and go to the next slide. You'll know that we, you'll notice that we always, the number we give is always the total number, which is confirmed case. As well as those that are under investigation. So today that number is at four hundred and forty, so from, so it's continuing to decline. Just out of curiosity, if you looked at just the confirmed case number today, it actually dips below four hundred confirmed. So again, some reason for positivity, some reason for optimism here. And as I think I said in the last report, if there is to be a change in trend. Based on the different variant strains of the virus, I don't think we've seen them yet. So maintaining good vigilance and good habits is the best way to. Keep that number in the downward trend as I think we're now at about. Twelve to thirteen percent of Coloradans who have had at least the first vaccination in the series. And about half of those have now had their second vaccine. So still a long way to go based on the number of doses that are coming to the state on a weekly basis. But some steady progress, that too will begin to have a cumulative effect as well. That's all I have for this evening unless you have any question.
I've got a couple people who'll have questions, Mike, but before, we can go back one slide. Just for the council and and the members of the public, this is kind of what we discussed this morning with the chamber. If you look at the Westminster Adams and Jeffco colors, blue and yellow, those are now actually reversed. Jeffco is now blue and Adams is yellow. So every day about four o'clock, we get a new update, so they changed again this afternoon. And then over the last week, they've been changing almost on a daily basis, flipping back and forth between one and the other one. So remember, we have to maintain these colors for two weeks. And even if both of our counties go into the blue. None of our businesses or restaurants will be able to go to the green status under the public health order from the C D P H E until they have increased vaccination. But we will stay in no more than, no lower than blue, but unless we can maintain it for the two week period, you can't move. Either one, and as we, Max is talking about, these numbers change on a daily basis, even since this morning, the numbers changed again, but the colors. Stayed the same as they were from about eleven thirty this morning. Have Counselor Demott and then Mayor Pro Tem sites had questions, Counselor Demott?
Thank you, I have a couple of quick questions, first, thank you, Mr. Kirschbaum, for the presentation. I'm curious, you said that we have a ways to go, and I'm just understanding, not everybody is likely going to get this vaccination. What's kind of the goal of C D P H E and like what is there going to be mean? Like, is there particular percent vaccinated of the population where we say we're at a good spot? You know, what's what's that indicator that our goal line we're trying to reach?
I don't know that I've seen C D P H E express a specific number, I think they lean more toward. The CDC number and the administration number, which is somewhere in the, I've heard. Range seventy to eighty plus percent in order to achieve that that degree of. in order to achieve that degree of community protection.
Okay, great. My other question is more of a logistical one. And I was having a conversation with the resident about masks and mandates in such as hopefully we continue a positive or negative trend, I guess is really what we want. But as we continue in that path and things look like they continue to clear up, we still have a mask mandate, I believe, because ours, we have to lift it. I don't, my understanding is the governor, if they still have one, at some point, does it make sense for us logistically to remove ours and just go with what the state's doing? I mean, at this point, we've kind of started, you know, initially we were at a place where we weren't sure what everybody else was going to do and everybody kind of went in line and then the state kind of took over. Does it make sense at some point for us to loosen up our stuff and just follow what the state dictates?
I think it's good for the city to keep that mandate in place if for no other reason, just to express our concern about our city facilities, our staff and the patrons. And as long as we remain in alignment with CDPHE guidance, I think it's appropriate to keep it in place. And I would add, I would add that on Thursday at the tri-county health update to the Adams County elected officials, where some of you were on that call. I know the mayor was on that call. Dr. Douglas was pretty emphatic that the mask mandate will be the last thing to be lifted. That'll be the thing that we hold on to the longest. I believe I'm saying that in similar words as he has said, but no matter what kind of progress we continue to make, we're going to keep that mask mandate in place for quite a while, I think.
Max, just adding to what you're saying. That is the same feeling that we had with the state, the CDPHE group and the regional health directors that took place Thursday, just before the tri-county one. And that was a consensus across all health departments, Adams, Jefferson, all the rest, along with CDPHE, that mask mandates would be the last requirement that would be lifted under all that we have. So even if we get into green status, you're probably going to still see mask requirements.
Yeah, I have my personal ideas about that, but I guess the point being if that's the case and that's the last thing to lift and now all of us, the health departments are in place and hate us as a state to get to a place where people are finally able to breathe, so to speak, and be like, no, just kidding, Westminster still needs to lift there. So you got to wait till the next time we meet. So that's, you know, I understand and I just feel like that's not going to change any of those things that you have in place. Because I feel like at that point, they're pretty, they're going to feel pretty comfortable that we're at a place where people can let the masks down. No pun intended, but you know, so, but I understand and I appreciate the, you know, your input and your thought behind it and the mayor's input as far as what the health departments are saying. So I have no further questions. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem.
I just have a very quick question. I'm just noticing that these, the numbers are for the last seven days. The thresholds, don't we have to be there 14 days?
Yes.
To be in the color? Okay. That's just what I.
Right.
Yeah, even though you're in a color today, you weren't in that color yesterday.
Yeah, so our 14 day number is a bit higher because I was on the website today. The incidence number, they're about double.
While they. They changed the metric to a per seven day. But the latest explanation from tri-county health is that you would need to maintain that seven day number for seven consecutive days. So if you have a hiccup somewhere in there and you go, say, to a number, any number above 100, that clock starts over again. So you're back to, you got to keep that seven day number under 100 for seven days. So you know, it's, that's why I say being right on the edge, it's going to be a little bit hard to get to that place that would allow them to declare blue until that number, you start seeing it significantly below 100. That therefore, when you have those days where there is a little bit of a bump, you're still going to remain below threshold. So it's a peculiarity of how they change that metric.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you presenting the data to us. On the graph where it showed kind of the twin peaks now of when we've surged, I was noticing one of the troughs was in October. And that was right around, I believe, when we had been talking about going into meet and city council. What, so the number at that point, this is hospitalization. Do we have something similar to this, which is tracking incidents? Do we know roughly what the incidence rate was in October?
Um.
Seven day or 14?
I could give you the number, but at that time we were using that metric of number per 100,000 per 14 days. And that, that's the period of time where we were just start, starting to see that climb that eventually went as high as about 1,500 in Adams County. But at this time, at the beginning of October, that number, I could verify it by notes, but it was, it was in the 200 to 300 range at that point, probably.
So my point is it kind of changed pretty quickly. And I was wondering if any of your conversations with tri-county health or with CDPHE, have we heard like the timeline of when they think we'll be able to determine if there is an impact from these variants? If, if, do you see what I'm saying? Like, do we think if we go a month and we don't see an uptick, that then we're pretty confident that those variants are, you know, not more concerning? They're not leading to higher rates of positivity in the community? The vaccine works against them. Do we have an idea of when we feel comfortable that this trend will continue through the emergence of those variants?
Just being a listener in some of those forums, I would say nobody's willing to walk out on that limb.
Okay. Thank you. I was just wondering if you knew something I did not.
Keep in mind too, that's the governor's staff is talking about the color chart 3.0. So we're anticipating that sometime in the month of March, we're going to get a new color dial. And we have no idea at this point, they presented nothing to any of the health department for review or input. So we're still waiting to see what they're going to propose and how they're going to change that color dial up. At this point, it's just an unknown other than we're going to have a 3.0 and we're in 2.0 today.
Well, this is still good news. So I'd still like to celebrate it that we're going down in the right, in the right direction.
Lot better than orange and red. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Kirschbaum? All right, ladies and gentlemen, we've had a request for an executive session. Mr. Demott, I want to come back to you for the motion. I think you've got it.
Yeah, just opening it up, give me one second. Thank you, Mayor. I move to enter into an executive session to confer with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice concerning tonight's request for reconsideration of the, of the quick trip decision made by council on February 8th, 2021, pursuant to Colorado revised statutes 24-6-402, 4B, sections 1-11-3C, 3 and 8 of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. I will confirm by a verbal confirmation that each member of the city council is prepared to go into an executive session. I would also remind the public that even though we're going to take it into an executive session, we still have open session to come back and finish. So we will be out for the period that we are. And at this point, Ms. Deckers, you have anything else before we take the roll call?
No, I don't, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Scully?
Yes, sir, I am prepared.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, I'm prepared.
Mr. Bowles?
Yes.
Mr. Seymour?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Demott?
Yes.
Okay, and the leader as well. We will go into executive session. It is currently 8:27. We've had a request for a bio, so I'm going to give you till 8:35. Remember to go to your calendar for the new link and the passwords for that. So we will reconvene at 8:35. And for the time being, we are out of this session. We are in recess for the public meeting. And for the time being, we are out of this session. We are in recess for the public meeting.
Thank you.
In the event that we have anyone in the public that is still listening, I wanted to give you an update. We're where we've just finished an executive session. We will be reconvening the public meeting at nine forty-five. So the council could have a short break before we come back. Again, we will be reconvening the public session at nine forty-five. All right, Ms. Parker, we're back on the record. And do you have, I'm showing one council member missing.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. I do believe we are back on the record. I show that we are still waiting on Council Smith to rejoin the meeting.
Okay, we'll hold till she rejoins.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'm sure that we are all reconvened.
Okay, can all the council members here then have audio? Everybody all right? Okay, all right, just for the record is now nine forty-six. We have just concluded an executive session that was brought to us late in the day. Regarding a application that was heard on February the eighth with QuickTrip. We have had some advice from our city attorney and staff as to how this may or may not be handled. And at this point, if there's a council member who wishes to make any kind of a motion regarding to this application, I will entertain the motion at this point. Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a request or excuse me, a motion to reconsider the denial of QuickTrip PDP on February eighth, two thousand twenty-one. That we made on February eight, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, is there a second? Counselor Seymour.
Second that motion.
All right, this will require a majority vote of counselor. And once we we have the motion is now before us. And I will open it up for any comments. Counselor Demott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted in full transparency to share with the council, thinking that this issue was behind us. I did talk to the property owner today on the phone. It in no way changes my view from what I shared before, anything ahead of us. But to be fully transparent, I wanted to make sure that I shared that I did speak with the property owner today.
Okay, Mayor Potem sites.
I'm going to be voting against this matter. We as a council on February eights in a public hearing on this matter. We then closed the public hearing. We took a vote. That vote was seven oh, letting us know saying that this was not the right use. This was not the right proposal for this site. I will acknowledge that four members of this council stated they were fine with the use. But they had concerns with access points. However, tonight we are being asked to change our process, to change our procedure. We did not get enough time to have this agendized so that our residents could would be aware that a matter that was considered settled was getting had the possibility of being reopened. I hear a lot of people talk about their concern for our residents' voices, talk about transparency. This does this reeks of bad governance in my decision. It is not transparent. It is not open. It's a change of procedure. It's offering somebody a different a second bite at the apple when we don't routinely offer that remedy. I'll be voting no. I genuinely think. I have been really proud of my term on council. There's a lot of people on this council that I think are good people that have different viewpoints than me. This is not a good way to do government. And so I will be voting no.
Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too will be taking standing on a vote of no tonight for many of the same reasons that Mayor Proten sites just mentioned. But again, just to review that for me, this was not just about the access. There were many things that I considered to be troublesome with this particular land use. There was fit. There was traffic. There were residents who were opposed to it. I felt that the process we had a process. This developer was denied by our staff, denied by our planning commission. And brought it all the way to the city council and was denied once again by us and now has decided didn't like that vote either. So trying to circumvent the situation. This is a bad precedent that we're setting by reconsidering something that has been denied now three times. I think we were very clear that this we wanted this developer to go back through the entire process for reconsideration. We took a vote. It was a seven zero. I just, I am concerned that there was really no notice to the public. So the only people that are really aware that we're talking about this tonight are the people that are on this call. But there's no notification anywhere else inviting people to have a comment on this. So I will be voting no.
Counselor Vols.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will also be voting no. You know, there's so much talk about transparency. We try to do what we can. This is not transparent. We got some kind of a notification late this evening. It isn't on the agenda. I don't see any, how would the public know? We want the public to know what's going on? I don't see it here. So we talk about that a lot, but I don't see transparency being upheld tonight. I will be voting no. There was no notice to the public on what we're even talking about. No one's sitting here watching this tonight. This, I have to say in my two over two years on council, this vote is the worst part of demonstrates some really bad governance. And we are not being transparent in this vote. And because of a developer and an attorney called us at five thirty tonight, we're being asked or having a motion to reconsider. That doesn't sit right with me. So I will be voting no on this. I think it's I agree with Counselor Scully and Mayor Perkins. This is a bad precedent. And I, I think we'll be reaping the the bad benefits of this for years to come. So I will be voting no. Thank you.
Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The points of transparency are valid. However, this isn't bad governance based on the council itself. As it's come to council at a late hour, what the reconsideration of the motion is, is just a reconsideration to move it forward. Not without public process. There absolutely has to be public due process as far as public comments, thoughts and opinions. This is just a reconsideration to move it forward to get it into a public process where it could be reconsidered. So it is absolutely not an end all be all. And if our city attorney, Kristen Dicker, could let us know that that is an end all be all, then it is an end all be all. But my understanding of this is that it's not, is that it's just a reconsideration to open it back up to a public process. For a reconsideration of vote of denial. The so much to that point of transparency, I have to disagree. This is a process of which it was brought to council in order for it to be an option. So I'm not understanding how this is not part of the process. If it didn't come to council, if this wasn't an option, then why was this moved forward for an executive session to be discussed as part of a process? That's just mind boggling to me as far as that goes. As far as our thoughts moving forward on a reconsideration, I'm just opening up the motion for that discussion as far as what that would look like for full transparency. So I would be in favor of reconsidering the motion of this denial.
Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate my colleagues' thoughts on this. I'm just reiterating a point I've made this evening in that process is important, but also how we get to that process and what is our end result is just as important. So that's why too, I believe tonight is is maybe just another starting point on this. And I made it very clear on my my vote on the eighth of why I was denying that. And it was for safety considerations and access to to this location. And so the process of having to have an applicant go all the way back to the beginning to to modify that is costly for everyone. And so if if my colleagues so leave that that this is possible after this vote, then then we may, we may save all everyone time and money. And may may not end up with any different case when it comes back to council through the planning commission. But I think we'll be able to, and we're frustrated about the process tonight myself, but I think by by if this vote passes to be able to bring it back out to the light of day and work through that again. And and I don't imagine that's going to be in a week or two weeks or even three weeks. Because it'll have to be the full process of the public hearing. So thank you for a lot of my comments.
Counselor Demott.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to my colleagues. I do think a lot of good valid points made. Transparency is important. Process is important. Appeal process is important. I see this as an avenue, obviously, because the we're allowed to do this. So it's not like we're breaking any rules. I would have preferred this come to us a different way. However, my understanding is that the applicant made this request this evening. And per the way other cities do it, from my understanding, is that it's to be at least open for reconsideration in the very next meeting. This is the very next meeting since we we had that discussion. On the eighth, if you listen to my comments, I very much was in line with land use was okay. But the access points and the safety were concerning. I think that Counselor Smith said it pretty well that this isn't saying that we're moving forward with the change of decision. We're giving the applicant opportunity to change those access points and address the safety concerns. And I'll take full responsibility that I didn't fully understand that I my understanding tonight is we could have belabored this and pushed it off and allowed them to go back and try to address that. I did not understand that option and I'll take responsibility for that. However, I don't think that the applicant should be punished for that. And so if this is an opportunity for them to legally be able to restart or not totally restart the process, but save time as Counselor Seymour stated, and be able to try to address those. Then great. I think that's a great opportunity for both staff time as well as the applicant's time. Then great. I think that's a great opportunity for both staff time as well as the applicant's time to be saved. And at the end of it, if they can't address those safety concerns, then it probably won't change much. But if they can, then I would like the opportunity to reconsider the changes they make. So I will be voting in favor. Giving this reconsideration and putting it back in a process to be able to address our concerns.
Counselor Volz.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My concern is I don't. So I think very good points. I appreciate all my colleagues making their points and thank you for that. I that's I. Well, I guess my concern is I don't feel this is being fair to residents. Why I say that as we talk about process, but we're changing the process now at the end because we got a qualified thirty from an attorney for a developer. It wasn't on the agenda. No one knows about it. We're making a motion on that particular thing. It went through public hearings. We had staff made recommendations. That was all public. We had planning commission and hearings and that was public. It was denied. And then we voted seven to zero. It wasn't close. I feel like we're changing the process at the very end. So if we had a process like other municipalities, which has been mentioned here. Where those processes were known upfront. So residents knew it. We knew it. I did. I mean. A lot of this is news to me. So shame on me. I didn't know. But if we're now saying that's an avenue available that. Residents aren't aware of. So I that's where I think it's not fair to our residents who maybe oppose this, maybe love. But nobody's got a chance to have input and be part of the public process. So my question would be in the motion, are we sending this back to the planning commission? Is that part of the motion? Or what stage of the process is this motion sent it to? That would be my question to. Counselor Smith, who made the motion, or maybe our attorney, or where was that in there? Maybe I missed it. Maybe it was already said.
The motion saying anything that tells you where you're going to go. It's only a whirl or not you're willing to reconsider it. If you wanted to go back somewhere, that would take a separate motion.
Thank you.
Figure out where we're at now. Mayor Protem, I think you're up.
I think it would be helpful for those listening to understand why my colleagues and I. Well, some of my colleagues and I strongly feel like this is a very. Strong departure, alarming departure from our typical process. Counselor Demont just made a assertion that appeal is part of the process. Well, actually not in Westminster. This remedy is not contemplated in Westminster's rules and processes. And in fact, this would be a departure from what we have done historically in the city of Westminster. I I'm nervous about talking too much about this because we just had an executive session. So I would ask if our city attorney, Assistant City Attorney Kristen Decter could come on. So I could ask questions of her rather than relaying the process.
Ms. Decker, there you are.
Hi, Ms. Decker. And please stop me if you feel like I'm about to divulge something that you would rather we not. The option to reconsider a decision of city council is not something that is contemplated in the Westminster. Rules and regulations code or charter. Is that correct?
Hang on just a second. Ms. Decker, I need you to answer that verbally.
Oh, correct.
What when our rules do not contemplate a certain procedure or process. We then can reference Robert's Rules of Order. Is that correct?
Correct.
But we are not bound by them. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. So in this situation, Robert Rules of Order would say that that reconsideration can happen. Either that that night, the same night as a decision, or the next business meeting. Is that correct?
Mostly yes.
Mostly yes. Do you want to clarify my my interpretation of it?
It's the. The actual wording is the motion can be made only on the same day on which the vote sought to be reconsidered reconsidered was taken. Or if meetings are held. Like council held some on multiple days, then the motion to reconsider should occur at the next business meeting.
So even even in like a very lenient interpretation of Robert rules. And and let's say this, we consider this the next business meeting, it would typically have already been agendized. This is this is pushing it. And the reason we're pushing it, as Counselor Smith said, isn't because of council. It's because the applicant's attorney contacted us at five thirty in the evening to say they wanted to consider this. Recognizing they're like throwing a hail Mary. This is an opportunity for them and it's their last shot at it because of that that time horizon. And so, in my opinion, that's what happened. This, I I just think that that we we have the ability to consider if we wanted to to consider this reconsidering. We don't have to do that. That's not a typical appeal. It will be the diversion from what we have typically done in Westminster. I don't think it's fair to former applicants for land use issues. I wouldn't want us to see this become the the new way. Honestly, the the planning commission voted against this and their remedy, their appeal was actually to come to council and to have it heard again. So again, to Counselor Smith's point, what we voted for didn't say they could never try this again or that we wouldn't have another another process. What we said is as it was presented to us, we declined it and they could go through our process. What they want to do is have a shortcut. They don't want to have to go through our whole process. Well, the process is there to protect public value. It's to make sure that what every development that comes into the city does not cause an undue burden or harm to existing residents. That's an important thing to uphold. Then it goes to the planning commission. And even if we remand it just to planning commission. This is, this is going to set a precedent, as Counselor Volz mentioned. Which really is not going to create that good collaborative back and forth with staff and planning commission earlier. What would stop future developers from from trying to constantly shoot for the moon? I I when I say that I'm voting against this because I think it's a bad precedent, I mean that. I wouldn't want to do that on a development that I think is a great idea. I wouldn't want to. It doesn't make sense to me. This has been established. We all heard it. We had a unanimous vote. I'm not sure if I can ask this question, so don't answer if it's inappropriate. But were we the night of the hearing? Did we all hear that continuation was an option that we had? That we didn't have to vote. No on the project, but that we could continue it? Is that information that all of us had available to us?
That was information, that topic was discussed in executive session. So that wouldn't be open for discussion at this.
At this point, okay.
You are. You are correct in that the the applicant's attorney contacted me probably about five thirty P M. This afternoon. With this request and I she asked me to relay it to council because of the time constraints of. When these motions for reconsideration can be heard. And you're absolutely right. It's a discretionary decision by council. It's entirely within your discretion to move forward with the reconsideration or not to.
But it's not a standard appeal or remedy that we have considered in the past. Is that correct?
It is not in your rules and regulations.
And the way that it was presented to us tonight to consider is not typical even for another jurisdiction. Is that correct?
Do you mean as far as the timing for submitting it?
Correct.
It was very short notice, for sure.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I I will tell you, I. What is the rush? Why not go back through our whole process to ensure that we're protecting public value? I to be be sure that we're protecting transparency. If this was a remedy they wanted to take, why couldn't they have told us Wednesday of last week so it could be agendized?
Is that it, Mayor Protem? Counselor Scully.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Mayor Protem touched on many of the points. I was also going to go back and walk through the process. So thank you. But one of the things that keeps coming to my mind is that we talk a lot about equality in this city and treating everybody equally. And yet, this situation is asking us to make an exception, to not treat people equally, to not treat our developers equally. We have had developers in the past come to us. We have denied them. And we have not said we would reconsider. We've said you must go back through the process because that is our process. And so I feel really that for not just equality sake, but equity sake. It's really important that we stick to our process and that our that this developer go back through the process, the whole process. And we approach it. We we gave them many guidelines of things that we wanted to see corrected on this, that we didn't feel were. That this was a good development for this location. I know that the majority were simple access, but there were a number of us that had other issues as well. And so I I just feel like for precedent sake and for making sure that we're being equal to all of our developers in our city. And that we are being transparent and doing what is right by our residents and carrying through the values of our city. That it is important for this developer to go back through the entire process as it is deemed by our city guidelines.
Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Decker, could you please come back?
Back.
Thank you. And Ms. Decker, I don't mean to have you on trial here, but I'm going to ask you a couple of questions. For the applicant, has any applicant have have had the same opportunity that this applicant has had in the past? So could any applicant after a denial have come back and said? We'd like a reconsideration.
Sure, they could have. But they're they might not have known about it because if they're not. They haven't been doing this for a while. They might not have known because it's not in your in the council's rules and regulations.
Okay. And it so it is such a process that could happen, may just not have been known.
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much. So to my colleagues, for that being said, I don't see how this is an inequality as far as that. We are changing the process. It's a process that's in place that can be fair and equitable, allowing us to discuss this openly. I agree. There's no there's no rhyme or reason to not having this agendize. Other than it came to us late this evening. And for for the majority of the discussion, it doesn't sound like necessarily that we're tied up on the reconsideration, which we are. But it seems more so that we're tied up on our procedures and the rules and and what we follow. Because I will be quite frank, this has come up almost a year to the date. When I asked for a item to be discussed among council and it regarded Stanley Lake voting. And we got nowhere on it with discussion wise because it wasn't agendized. I got it. That that makes sense. And now we're here a year later and it's not agendized, not to anyone's point. But the process of following Robert's rules is you either follow it or you don't, or we have procedures or we don't. Or we have codes and and charter items that we follow or we don't. And so when there's gray areas, people find those loopholes. Does that mean that it's right or wrong? Absolutely not. If it's a loophole, if it's something that can be discussed further like we're doing, then that's a process. That's a process to me and it's due process. And so I'm not understanding then why how this can't be a reconsideration for discussing publicly. And maybe the motion isn't to reconsider tonight. Maybe the reconsideration is to actually agendize this for a consideration next Monday. Or the first count next council meeting of March. And that may help the process. I don't know. But I still stand on the fact that this is being transparent, having a discussion. I think it's fruitful for for our public to hear. And maybe the motion isn't the correct emotion and I'm willing to. Adjust it so that it makes appropriate sense where we're going.
Counselor Demont.
But before I make a a motion to potentially amend this, Ms. Decker. With the proper thing to do, if we wanted to say send this back to planning commission. Because I think that the desire even of those that may want to go forward with this, or at least my desire certainly would be to open. Some some public transparency back into what the changes are, and there would have to be some changes. So I think it would be good for it to go back to planning commission and go through the process and allow them to address the access points. Which is what the primary thing is that there was a majority of the council. There were four people, if I remember correct. But that was their primary concern. So would that be a that would, if my understanding was right, that would be a secondary motion if the reconsideration passes, correct?
Correct. So it wouldn't go through. It would. It would just. It would. You could. Sorry, I'm not speaking well. So could it remand it to planning commission? Planning commission with and with full notice again, just like they were required to the first time. And then and then planning commission would make a recommendation to city council based on the new plan. And city council would consider it at a later date with notice as well.
Good. Perfect. So with that being said. If this were to pass. I would want to continue to gain my support for it to go back to the public process. Because I think my colleagues are all right, that the public does deserve a say. They do deserve to see anything that's changed. They do deserve the same second bite at the apple as we've heard as the developer, just like in any process. There are two sides to it. People can come and say, bad idea, good idea, and then we weigh that all out. That would be my my preference. So I I don't see how this is that astronomical of an ask, frankly. I could think of other times where we stopped mid meeting at Saint Mark's. And then we totally changed the process and paused one part and did a different part. That was out of of the norm, but we did it because the majority of council thought that that was going to be the best way for the public to hear all the information. So I I understand what you're saying and I think that we all care about transparency and I would find it upsetting if. This becomes a who's more transparent, because I don't think anybody here that's asking for this to be reconsidered is asking for any. Less transparency. If anything, this gives the public more opportunity. Sure, we could just say no, and then it goes back to square one. But I think that's a, again, I think that's a waste of both staff and the applicant's time. So there is a path that gives transparency. We're not just saying, yep, we're switching our mind. I don't think that that's what's happening here tonight. So I just wanted to be clear about. What my intention would be. So. If this passes and there's a four person vote, I would be in favor of the next. Motion being something that remedies this back to the planning commission and allows them time to work with staff with a better opportunity for access. That's safe.
Other comments from council, Mr. Seymour.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to call the question.
Well, I will take that, but I'm going to try to get some comments in, if you don't mind, since I'm not presenting any. And then we will try to go to a vote. There's a couple of things. You've all alluded to the fact that this came in very late today as a verbal conversation between the applicant's attorney and our city attorney. And nothing that has transpired in our conversation has identified is what is the redo that they want to do? There is a presumption from a number of us that is just to deal with the access points. But that was not verbalized in anything that we've heard tonight. We also know that we don't have a process for this appeal within our process. Other cities may, but that's I don't make any difference of what other the cities do. We're not voting on other cities. We're voting on Westminster. To go for it back up could present a problem. It may not present a problem. That could be determined in the future. But I don't know what I'm reconsidering. Other than somebody reconsider the vote, but what is it you're trying to get me to reconsider? There's no information on that. So I wouldn't know what I was voting on. It is a perplexing piece to come at this kind of an hour. With no notice, no information about what you're asking me to reconsider other than just open the process back up. We have all alluded to different pieces of this being open for discussion. There were a number of things that the staff, planning commission and council members took exception to on the application. and council members took exception to on the application other than just access. Now, a number of people, if I remember right, just about a majority of the people voted that contained the access point as one of their issues. Don't disagree. That was very well materialized and verbalized during the comments by the council members before they took a vote. But what we're being asked is to make a reconsideration on the fly without any information of what it is we're to reconsider. I would have been a lot more comfortable on something if I knew what you were asking me to reconsider. We're just making a presumption, again, because we don't have that data in front of us. I think you need to each weigh your thoughts. I think you need, you have verbalized where you're standing right now. I will go shortly to the city clerk and ask her to do a roll call vote. And the motion before us is to, whether or not we should reconsider the application denial from February the 8th. It's pretty straightforward. It's either yes or no. If it's a yes, then we will entertain a second motion of how to deal with that. As some of you have alluded, you think it should go back to start at the planning commission instead of starting all over. That is an option. But if it gets passed the first vote, then we can consider that one. So as Mr. Seymour has asked for a call for the questions, are there any other questions that you need answered? Otherwise, I'm gonna go to the vote. All right, seeing none, Ms. Parker?
Mr. Mayor, I put my, I put my initials in.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. I, I just wanna quickly, because you make a very good point. Does city manager Tripp or Ms. Decker have any context around why they asked to be reconsidered?
And I do, I'm, I'm going back and looking at my message. I, I think the, the gist of it is that because they were under the, the applicant was under the impression that the denial, at least four members denied the application due to just the access issue, that this would be an easier, not easier, less cumbersome process to go through if that's all that was required of them to possibly obtain an approval from council.
Thank you, Ms. Decker. I think the mayor brought up a very valid point and I think that's important to understand that because that is part of my decision, being that I remember that Ms. White during the hearing after the executive session did mention the access points. But again, I'll take responsibility that I didn't understand, we could have continued it. Had I known that, I would have tried to suggest that that night. Again, I take responsibility for not following that. But you know, there is something in my mind that they're asking us to reconsider and that's specifically the one thing that I had an issue with. So I appreciate that context, Ms. Decker.
I'd like the chance to also respond, Counselor Demott. I want to reiterate, I want to support what city attorney Decker said. When we left the meeting on February 8th, it was my understanding that four of you desired us to work on the access point traffic issue and I directed staff, if contacted by the applicant, to do that and to attempt to work with them to resolve that issue because it was my understanding that four of you wanted to do that. And we, we proceeded on that basis since then. We've not heard from the applicant about that matter, so I was surprised tonight to hear for this request that came in, frankly, and put in a very difficult position as to how to handle that because the direction I actually had from all of you was different than that. It was to work through, first of all, resolving this one particular issue. I'd just tell you, I would consider that we still have that direction and if the applicant makes contact with us and wants to talk about that particular issue, we'll do that. My understanding, though, if this doesn't get continued is that they would be required to follow whatever process we have for a second go-around with this particular issue. Does that help?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Tripp.
Any other comments? All right, Ms. Parker, I'll ask you to conduct a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Ashson?
No.
Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sights? Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
No.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
And Counselor Bowles?
No.
Ms. Parker, can you repeat the mayor pro temps? I could not hear her.
Yes, I can, you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Protem voted no.
Okay. All right. The motion to reconsider dies on a 4-3 vote. If the applicant wishes to come back with the modifications, they come back in, I fully support them doing that. But I'd like to see what they're proposing and go back through the process that we have. And hopefully in the future, if we can take a look at the fact that we don't have this process in place within our rules and whether or not that should be something we should consider adding in, but that will be for a future discussion. All right, we have two other items left on our agenda tonight. Mr. Door, I know that you had added a short item. How long do you need for your item?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem and council members, I, I think three or four minutes, just to provide a quick update and any comments that three members of the city council might have on the matter, sir.
All right, let's get yours.
Very good. The city council has recognized that the city's HR department has undertaken best practices and provided excellent service regarding the performance appraisals of council's three appointees, the city manager, city attorney, and presiding judge. Yet, in an effort to eliminate any perceived conflicts of interest, city council has directed staff to facilitate an RFP process for consultants to undertake the annual performance evaluation of these three employees. On this past Thursday evening, a subcommittee of city council interviewed two firms for the prospective work and arrived at a unanimous choice in selecting one consultant. It is now the choice of council in whole. If you would like to interview the unanimous choice or proceed to contract with the chosen consultant immediately. Now I'd welcome Mayor Protem Sights, Counselor Demott, and Counselor Scully to provide any comments they may have on the process or next steps. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, if someone from the group wants to put forward some comments, that would be appreciated.
Um, so I will just real quick touch on this. Counselor Scully and Counselor Demott and I, along with members of staff, met with the two different groups that submitted proposals for this. And they both had very similar processes. However, this was one of those wonderful times where we all unanimously coalesced, coalesced around one group over the other. Their explanation of their process was clear, very, made, made a lot of sense, was very clear the value we would get from them and what the terms were. And they just had a real deep bench of talent working there that we could use for this important portion of our responsibility as city council is, is to provide clear, fair, and useful feedback to our, our appointees. So I was very impressed with the team. I would really encourage Counselor Demott and Counselor Scully to weigh in. But it was, it was a, I, I'm excited to use their services in the future if you choose to go forward with them.
Counselor Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with everything that Mayor Protem just said, but I wanted to add that there were two things that I, I really appreciated about the group that we chose. I believe they're CPS. And one of the things was that they take both a qualitative and a quantitative approach, which really stood out to me. And I, I really liked how they outlined how that would occur. And I liked, well, I guess there were three things because I also liked how they were very forward-thinking in not only how they would approach things in the coming months, but then what they would do to set up for the future. There are four things, okay. And then the next thing was that I really appreciated that there was an emphasis on the importance of considering equity, diversity, and inclusiveness in their consideration of the evaluation of the employees, but also in directing the employees and how that would be a part of their evaluation. And then finally, the, the cost was fairly equal between the two groups, but I appreciated the, the cost a little bit more for CPS because it actually came in a little bit lower, but then they added on how they would be available for future consultation. And that was what brought it to an equal playing ground. So those were the four things that really inspired me to lean in one direction over the other.
Counselor Demott?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll tell you that it really isn't any fancy buzzwords that I'm gonna share with you that impressed me. It was the fact that they had serious technology difficulties and were able to still present in a way that was super impressive that I felt connected to them. And I think they felt a great job for us considering the technology was awful for them. And to be able to go through an interview like that with technology barely working and be able to connect with the whole group where you come out on top shows that you're gonna be a top-quality group.
Counselor Seymour?
I just wanted to start off on, on a comment to, Mr. Door mentioned the fact that, you know, how we wanted to proceed for here. I, especially since it was unanimous, I, I am fully on board with my colleague's decision on that.
Counselor Smith, any comments?
I would concur, Mr. Mayor, that I'm on board, I'm on board with my colleagues, especially since it was unanimous. And I thank you for your service and doing the hard work that many of us couldn't do at the time. So thank you for that.
Counselor Bowles?
I concur as well. I, I, along with Counselor Smith and Counselor Seymour, I, my three colleagues, thank you for your time and I would concur. So I think we move forward.
Well, since no one has an objection and this was a unanimous vote, we're not split in any way, I have no problem with proceeding on. So, Mr. Door, what else do you need?
That'll, that'll be very helpful, Mr. Mayor. We will prepare council legislation to enter into the contract with an appropriation and we'll bring that forward on a future agenda and we will begin getting organized with the consultant for next steps with the council and proceed forward. Thank you for your work and thank you to the subcommittee for our process Thursday and your patience with our technology challenges Thursday and moving forward with the choice. We will, to be continued in next steps. Thank you.
I can't imagine anybody having technical difficulties at this time of the world, but there's not a Zoom meeting or platform meeting of any kind that doesn't see some sort of a hiccup before the meeting gets over. All right, let's go on to the next item, our final item for the night is the future in-person hybrid city council. Mr. Tripp, who from staff is leading this?
Mr. Mayor and council, Mayor Protem and council, Barbara Olpe, our deputy city manager, is responsible for the city hall of the building and preparations. She's done incredible amount of work with Michelle Parker on this. Barbara's having some technology issues and so I've reviewed this slideshow ahead of this evening and was just ready to pinch-hit, but it looks like we've got our cleanup hitter on, so I'll go back to the bench.
Well, we'll keep our fingers crossed that my technology won't crash in the middle of this. So I apologize, I've already rebooted one during the meeting. So thank you very much for the opportunity to chat with you this evening. I, I do have to acknowledge that Michelle Parker and a subcommittee of staff have been working on this effort for quite some time. Thank you for the opportunity to talk with you a little bit and get some guidance from you this evening about future in-person city council meetings. The staff, if you could go to the next slide, just a little background. As you know, the city hall and some of our administrative facilities and majority of our facilities were closed to the public back almost a year ago, March of 2020. We've been having the, the meetings remotely using the online platform, GoToWebinar, which is the activity that we're using tonight. We had been planning for a return to in-person meetings starting early last summer and we were ready to go, as you, as you all are aware, back in October when the cases started escalating and things turned to the opposite direction. But during this time, we've been using this to learn from neighboring jurisdictions and identifying things that are working well and then identifying things that maybe there's opportunities for improvement. At this time, we are recommending a phased-in approach that preserves the opportunities for the remote participation in compliance with the public health orders. If we could go to the next item. We are operating under the current health orders here. If you go to the COVID weekly report, we have attached that staff report, all of these executive orders, the CDPHEs, public health orders, tri-county's health department, their public health order regarding face coverings. And then the city of Westminster also has our resolution as well. So these are the items that we're using as our guiding principles as we put together the document for you, for your consideration. With that next slide, I'm gonna turn it over to Michelle Parker because she has been doing a significant amount of the heavy lifting with these protocols and working us through the details. And she'll walk us through the different phases and if we could, just try to walk through the different phases and then we'd love to have your feedback at the end, if that would be acceptable. Thank you. Michelle? Michelle, I think you're on mute.
Of course I am. Thanks, Barbara. And thank you, council, for the opportunity to present this information to you and kind of give you an overview of some of the work that we've been doing actually for, for several months prior to tonight. As Barbara mentioned, there was a subcommittee of staff who have been working on different recommendations on how we would roll out in-person meetings for city council. At this time, we are recommending a phased approach and based on some of the feedback that we were given from council and then based on some of our meetings, the preservation of the ability for some people to participate remotely became very important. So just to give you a quick overview of phase one. Again, phase one would entail that council staff and outside partners could continue to participate remotely. But it would also allow for council and minimal staff to be in-person using a hybrid model. And what that means essentially is that you could have some members of council who, for whatever reason, whether they have a health reason or just any kind of other reason to participate remotely, they could still do so using our current platform as well as any staff and partners that might need to present to you during a meeting at any given time. Regarding public comment and public hearings, what we would do in phase one is continue to offer the three methods that are currently available for participation and that includes written email comments, using our voicemail box to provide five minutes of verbal comments, and then requesting through the city clerk's office the link to the live meeting in order to speak during the public comment section. Both of these in-person would roll out in subsequent phases and we'll get into that here just in a moment. And those participating person, of course, it would be expected they would be completing our COVID symptom check protocols upon entry to city hall. And of course, as we are under the current health orders as well as our current city resolution, masks would be required inside city hall and inside city council chambers during phase one. Next slide, please. Phase two, again, council staff and outside partners could continue to participate remotely. We do want to preserve that option for people who would like to exercise it. But in phase two, we would be moving into having city council additional staff and limited in-person public hearings. And I'll talk a little bit about what limited means. First of all, for public comment, we would continue to offer the three methods for participation. Again, email, voicemail, and a link to the live meeting and roll out public comment in phase three. But in phase two, we would anticipate allowing public hearings to open up to the public a little bit more. And what we mean by limited is first and foremost, city hall is currently bound by a capacity number that is based on advice from our local health departments in order to preserve six-foot social distancing. And within our chambers and our lobby, it is not a huge number. It is 16 members of the public in the chambers and 16 members of the public in the lobby. That does not include additional staff, security staff, police presence, and of course, city council themselves. So that would be strictly the number of public that would be allowed in and out of chambers and lobby at any given time. So in order to participate in a public hearing under phase two, we would require an advanced registration for in-person attendance. It would, of course, be limited to the number allowed. And there's a couple of ways that we could handle that. We could simply cap a number. But most likely, what we would do is not cap the number and then use procedures to meter people in and out of the building as needed, which is something that other jurisdictions around us have started doing as well. Again, those participating in person would complete their COVID symptom check protocols. Upon entry, masks would be required for city hall and council chambers per the current orders. And one other recommendation that council, that we would like to present to you, council, is that for anticipated high-participation public hearings, staff had a very robust series of conversations about how we would handle those. Our recommendation at this time is for anything that we anticipate being very, very high participation, that we would schedule a totally separate special city council meeting just to hear that item in order for us to be able to usher people in and out of the building who want to be heard in person. And again, phase two, if I don't believe I actually said this bullet out loud, we would still continue to offer those three methods for participation. We want to preserve where we can the more robust options for people to participate with council, whether that's email, voicemail, a link to the live meeting, or phase two, coming in person to give your testimony during a public hearing. Next slide, please. So phase three, again, continuing to preserve this remote participation option for council staff or outside partners. And then in phase three is where we would anticipate rolling out not just city council, but extended amounts of staff and having open for limited in-person public comment as well as public hearings. We would, of course, adjust our pre-registration according to the current COVID dial levels, whatever the current public health orders were at that time, and of course, building capacity, which could fluctuate by the time we move into that phase. And the next slide, please. And then phase four, essentially for us, is out in the future. This is when council meetings would be open to the public. We're really kind of going back to normal, seeing a sense of normalcy out in the world as well as in our own building. And some of the assumptions along with phase four would be that COVID-19 cases are in great decline. Vaccination has opened up to the public at large for people who wish to get vaccinated. Public health orders support large gatherings, and that most public health restrictions have been lifted. And let's see, next slide, please. So this evening, we are seeking direction from city council on the following items. First and foremost, feedback on this phased approach and whatever comments you might have about the details of those phases. Also, a target date to begin phase one in-person city council meetings. And then finally, we did have one question for council on whether council would like to opt to continue remote study sessions either for the time being or until a date certain in the future. So those are the things that we are seeking direction on this evening, and we are happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Mayor Protem, I think you're up first.
Thank you, and thank you for the incredible amount of work that you put into this. Anyone who is listening at home, you should also know we were provided a list of what other jurisdictions are doing as well, just so we can see what our kind of current best practice is. I did have a quick question. Recently, I've testified a few times and was able to do so at the Air Quality Control Commission most recently and was able to do so over video. And my understanding is a lot of people who want to see us back in person, it's because they want to have that like connection at public hearings in particular, where we can see the face of the person who's going to be impacted, that they can see us react to their testimony. And I wanted to see, have we contemplated at all for any of these phases or even with status quo right now, some way to allow video testimony or video public comment, rather, recognizing I do think that there is that desire, you know, so much of communication is nonverbal. I think some people are hungry to have that type of communication. Is that something we've looked at at all?
We have had some conversations with the city attorney regarding the concerns. And that would be an item I suspect would want to be going, have an executive session regarding. And I apologize, that was not something we had discussed in preparation for tonight. But I know that Dave Frankel had expressed some reservations and some concerns and wanting to make sure that we were being fair and equitable in that area.
And I apologize I didn't bring it up earlier. It was looking through the list of other jurisdictions. I did notice a few of them had Zoom as a way that they were getting public testimony, which is what, which is what kind of triggered it for me, that and the fact that I just gave public testimony last week that way. So appreciate that. As far as the question with study session, I think I would still be fine with it being online. But I do like the phased approach that you have detailed out. I would, it would be important to me that everyone continued to wear their masks.
And Mayor Protem, if I might, just to address your Zoom question, and I apologize if this wasn't clear in the backup materials that we provided to you about what other jurisdictions are doing. Those that are providing links to Zoom meetings, much like we're providing links to our meeting for live public comment, no one that I am aware of is allowing for video just over a link from your own home at this time. I know that there were a couple of jurisdictions who had set up a separate room in city hall to give testimony for council via a Zoom that was set up. But just to be clear, none of the jurisdictions that we spoke to are giving out a Zoom meeting link and allowing people to give testimony, for example, from their living rooms.
Yeah, my apology for misunderstanding that. Thank you for the clarification. I did not realize it was verbal from that list.
Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for this presentation. Ms. Parker, obviously staff has done a lot of work in thinking this through, and Ms. Opie as well. I, my question is, so, well, actually, part of my question was triggered by Mayor Protem. Because she asked about the video, and I'm just curious if we have a reason why we wouldn't want to do the video if it's an option that we could offer to the public.
I think the only thing that came up, Counselor Scully, was Ms. Opie's comment that the city attorney has reservation. They wanted to discuss that in an executive session before we made that kind of a decision. And since he's not here, I don't know what his problem was.
Okay. All right. I did hear that part, but I think I wasn't correlating it, so I apologize. And I like this phase in process. I feel like the reason why we want to be back in person is so that the public has access to us and we can actually, the public can see us and we can see the public and we can connect better. This doesn't feel like we're going to actually have that opportunity for quite some time. But I do understand that there is a wish for us to come back to council. I would be comfortable with this phase in process. I would like to see the study sessions remain remote because I do believe that as long as we are not all vaccinated and there is still a threat of, of the disease mutation and it's still being very prevalent in our society, I think that it's important we as leaders demonstrate the importance of social distancing as much as we can, taking those precautions, wearing masks, making sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure that we are not spreading and that we, that we are encouraging other people to not spread the disease. And as for a target date, oh, and I did have a question because I did not hear anything about the, one of the questions we had been asked was about the air ventilation. And I was wondering how that had played out. Had we decided that that was something we would be willing to wait for, for the HVAC system to be upgraded? Or is that just off the table?
Ms. Opie, do you have anything to add to that?
No, what I was going to-
I think I'll handle this, Barbara. We've made great progress within our buildings in upgrading these systems. And I believe it is our expectation that, what we hoped for was an installation by the end of March that will meet that, will meet those dates. So I would anticipate, depending upon when you start, if you do, if you do go back in, that will either be done before you or immediately after you.
So to me, that would mean that the target date would actually be the end of March or beginning of April. Am I interpreting that correctly, Mr. Tripp?
Yes, I, you know, if any of the staff that are on the call have any different information, the most recent information I have is that it's likely that we can, we can count on this by the end of March. If it's earlier than that, feel free to jump in, anyone.
Anything else, Ms. Scully?
No, sir. That's all I had. Thank you.
I'll text Barbara and get that answered.
Thank you.
Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mayor Protem, for bringing up the video part of that too. And I have a feeling we're going to have some great ideas in our March 29 study session about how we can be more open even after we're open, open and being able to reach more citizens. So I'm looking forward to that. All the great things that we've, the positive things that have come out of this from a communication standpoint. One item I wanted to discuss, it's part of some of the results from the survey. You all saw my comments on there, my very direct as usual about that. But communication is absolutely critical in what we do. And I want everyone to feel safe, so that's why I'm glad it's a phased approach. No one should be made to do anything. That's critically important. But I've seen on national events, regional, local events, where speakers who are isolated, and if you have not been and seen what the work that's been done at the dais, I really suggest that you go take a look at that and see how well they've spread us out and the partitions that are in place and for the speaker. So I think it would give you some, a little bit of solace on coming back. But I'd like to see what my colleagues' thoughts are is, and someone mentioned this, I didn't, I didn't bring it up in the survey, is that while we're speaking, to briefly remove our mask, is that, that's an important part of that nonverbal communication? So I'll, I'll throw that out there.
Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of questions I have for phase three. Would we continue to allow all levels of communication with the public? Meaning the three levels that we have now, email, voicemail, and link to live? Because it wasn't laid out in that phase three.
Yeah, absolutely. There's no plan on our part to remove any of those options now or in the future, honestly. And we anticipate having a more robust conversation about our options moving forward on March 29. But at this time, no, we anticipate that phase three, and as we roll back out to a sense of normalcy, that we're going to continue to offer folks more options to communicate with their council and not less.
Okay, thank you, because that was one of my concerns and much to like what Counselor Seymour just mentioned, that it's important that we continue those lines of communications. And now that we know that we can do that and facilitate that, I think that's also important. I'd also like to see us continue to stream our council meetings and study sessions. I know that we haven't in the past when we were actually in person, and I think there is now capability to do that. So I'd like to see that still to move forward, that we are having that streamed approach. And so I appreciate having that level of communication as well, continued level of communication. I think much to Counselor Seymour's point that no one should be forced to do what they don't want to do. I think we're all on different comfort levels, and I think that that is appropriate to, appropriate reflection to our community as well. I do think, though, that there is something to be said as a leader showing that you do have confidence in your staff, knowing that all protocols are met, staying six feet apart, wearing a mask. So I think that this, what has been laid out here as a phased approach, is sound and doable. Something that I do, and it's kind of been touched on tonight, something that I'd like to see us solidify on is what that determining of date is. I know that things have changed, and we discussed in the COVID report that the counties keep going from blue and yellow and blue to yellow. However, I think that we need to have a date in mind as far as coming back. And I believe Counselor Seymour mentioned this last meeting or a couple of meetings ago as far as having a date so that we understand and that the public understands that we're targeting a certain timeframe. I thought that that was logic, logical and appropriate for the way that, that we're trying to move this forward and get back in person for, for many that would like to come see this, see us, and for many that would like to be actually in person and then have that hybrid approach for those who may not be as comfortable. So thank you for this work, but I would like to solidify that by the end of tonight.
Counselor, excuse me, Counselor Demak.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff, for preparing this. I know that I certainly have been pushing to get some plans in place. And I know that we had a plan once upon a time, and the world didn't go our way, much like the last 12 months. It used to be 2020, now it's the 2020s, I guess, seem to keep rolling with it. But I appreciate the work on this. I would ask that we try to figure out a way that speakers could have their masks off. I think that that is a big piece of communication. We're seeing it down at the State House where people, not everybody, but some people do take their masks off when they speak as, as our state legislator goes into session. I've been able to have the pleasure to watch some of those sessions so far that have started. So I think that with the right safeguards that can be done safely, and I would prefer that. And I would also like a date. Otherwise, I'm super comfortable with everything that you put together. I'm glad that we're taking the opportunity to find the silver linings in this and how we can be more transparent and more communicative and have more people be able to attend our meetings. But that would be my only two things that I would still push for is that when people are speaking, that they can remove their masks as well as that we pick an actual date to move forward with. But otherwise, this is great work, and I super appreciate it.
Mayor Protem, slides.
Yeah, thank you. And I want to be really clear for anyone listening. And I actually was a council member that stated I'd be fine if one person at a time took off their mask as they speak into the microphone. Since that time, I found out that a good friend of mine's 14-year-old granddaughter is dealing with liver failure because she has now autoimmune hepatitis, a complication of COVID. Thought about the impact, how, you know, and then reading that Arvada had a council member, like, the exposures are possible, right? I know that they're going down and we're going in the right direction. But it seems, and I'm really a big fan of seeing your face and seeing that nonverbal communication, which was why I proposed it in the first place. But I think at least in phase one, I do not feel comfortable with people taking off their masks. I would hate to be the person that brought something to you that harmed a family member of yours or you, or one of our member of staff or one of their loved ones. I just, I think, at least in phase one, until we have more vaccinations out there, until we continue to see that decline, I'd like to see if we're in person to keep that mask on. I hope you can understand that. I think that's the best practice. And I, and I just want to be honest, I did flip on that. I did put out there that I was comfortable with it and have since changed my mind and wanted to give you context for that.
Counselor Seymour.
Mayor Protem, I very much appreciate what you just said. And honestly, while I'm not the most compliant person in the world, I will, I personally- I will, I personally, in phase one, will do everything it takes to get us back together, including wearing my mask the entire time. So I got, I just wanted to have that as a discussion point. I thought long and hard about that too, because that's, that's the sticking point because our, it's not just to be in person, it's to fully communicate. And I find masks dehumanizing. And so we all just have this mask in front of us. And I don't, I don't have anybody that can paint the likeness of me on my mask, nor does most people want that in public. So, um, I'll, I'll-
Mr. Volz, you're about the only one I haven't heard from.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, so I take what Counselor Seymour just said and Mayor Protem. I see us in phase ones to wear the masks. I do agree though, that I think it does cut down on that verbal communication, which we all like. And we were all in this, this effort because we like to be around people and we enjoy that kind of camaraderie and being around. However, I think for me, I'd be comfortable, I think, just leaving masks on for that first phase at least. And then I think one of the questions is study sessions be remote. I am perfectly fine with that. We don't really take public comment. It's us amongst ourselves. I'd be comfortable with that. So I would think, I'm with everything presented here, I'm also comfortable. I would want to thank staff for all their work on this. A lot of work went into this. So thank you for the logistics and I think that covers it. Right, or is there something else? I think that's it. So thank you.
Ms. Parker, I got your note. Do you want to talk? I'll come to you in just a second. I know that all of us received a survey that was put together by staff and we've all responded to that. And everybody that had comments on particular issues, I think you included those. I think some of you re-expressed those tonight. I think what staff has done has tried to consolidate comments and questions and desires and whatever we could to try to meet as much as we can as a collective body. Keeping in mind that we're not only trying to protect those on council, but those on staff. And for the present time, most anybody who would be in the meeting from the city has not had the opportunity to receive vaccines. We don't know when those will happen. And I know that's still a big concern for a lot of people to make sure we get as many people vaccinated as possible. But at the same time, I think there's a desire from all of us at some point, when it's safe and we can do it appropriately, that we can come back to the council chambers. I think staff has presented a very viable phased-in approach. I think the majority has said they want to stay remote, at least for study sessions, because there is no public involved. But at council meetings, and I'm going to, I've been looking at the calendar and trying to figure out, because you've asked for a date. My thought was that we would try to do this with the consent of the staff and council as a group. Try to make our first one as early as March the 8th. That's two weeks out. That gives staff a couple of weeks to work on, seeing if they can finish the HVAC system, which I know some people had in question, myself included. And that gives us some time to get back, give staff to get activated and also to make sure that the security stuff that where we use our contract employees, we can assure that they are available to come back as well and set up the in processing of anybody who comes into City Hall during those times, that we have all the stuff set up for temperature checks, the logins, whatever else they need to do. That would give us the target, I think, that everybody's been looking for. Mr. Tripp, if you don't think you can make, you are Miss Opie, don't think that that's a viable date that staff can be prepared for. I'm willing to listen to what you've got to say.
Well, I'm going to jump in really quickly on one thing. And of course, if Barbara is able to join us, she's been kind of in and out here. But I can't answer Councilmember Scully's question, because Barbara texted me that we'll have that HVAC air handling improvement program done mid to late March. So, you know, I'm guessing 15th, 20th, somewhere in that range. Barbara, are you able to join us to talk about what it's going to take to get the security folks ready to go, which would be two weeks?
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Michelle, Michelle and I can tag team on this one. But as far as the security company is concerned, we do need some lead time with them because they have to staff up for this. And so we, Michelle, is it, is it four weeks that we were going to need with the? Originally it was going to be two, but we're not sure where they are with their hiring process. So that would be one of the things that we would request a little latitude on. Michelle, maybe you could speak to that better than I can. And then we obviously know that we're going to need some support from external staff, from other staff as well. So Michelle?
Yeah, thank you, Barbara. You're exactly right. Your first, your first timeline. The contract security company, Mercurial, that we engage with for security, as you know, has been not working for us for nearly a year now. And they indicated to us that they would need 30 days approximately to be able to hire new staff, put staff through their rigorous training and then train them in our procedures at City Hall in order to make that first meeting smooth. We do anticipate that having security presence is going to be important even in phase one and maybe even particularly more so in phase one to ensure that anyone who might assume that because council's back in chambers, that we have just opened back up entirely, could be then redirected, given information, et cetera, while that meeting's going on. The other thing I do want to stress to you, staff would like to have an opportunity to prepare at least a couple of dry runs with council. One of the things that we didn't go into too much detail tonight regarding that hybrid system, we've installed new cameras in the council chambers. We're anticipating how our system will work. Well, we've tested it. I don't want to say we're anticipating. We have tested it multiple times. But the way that this would work moving forward with the hybrid system is depending on how many people were in person that night and how many people were remote, we would still have to have system checks. We would have to train council on the differences and the nuances with using your microphones at the dais versus having your, your microphones on a personal laptop, things of that nature. So there are definitely going to be a couple of details that we would request that we would be able to have time to schedule dry runs, not just with internal staff and contract employees, but with council yourselves, just to make sure that we go off without a hitch from, from the get-go.
Ms. Parker, I know that typically our security personnel are contract. They handle all security issues, processing people in, bag checks. They will be the ones handling all of the COVID requirements. Our PD does not do that. Is that correct?
That is correct. We would also have to beef up that security presence in the front because of, first of all, social distancing. Second of all, making sure that people are being directed and are actually going through with the COVID protocols as they enter City Hall. And that includes, you know, personal staff, of course, we would all be going through that entrance at the get-go. But for any reason, say, for example, you have an alarm go off on the, the magnetometer, that security guard is going to have to move over and then, you know, using best practices with social distancing would be taken out of the mix for that front door. So we need a few more bodies. And so that's part of the equation as well.
I was about to ask you, because we've typically done that with one person and then using our PD to supplement stuff while we were holding those, especially if somebody had to go through a wanding. So you're anticipating we're going to have to increase the staff from the contracting bodies to handle all this?
We will have to increase the staff. Phase one will be the level of increase that we'll see in subsequent phases when we're actually welcoming limited amounts of the public back into the building. But certainly from day one, it will still be an increase from what we used to have.
All right. Mayor Protem, you had another question?
I do have another question. And it's not for phase one, so I don't know how relevant it is for right now. But one of the things we talked about is when we do have public hearings and we're letting people in and having the temperature checks, what happens if someone has a temperature check and they have a temperature? Have they foreclosed on their opportunity to have public comment at that hearing? Because now it's past the deadline where they can call in or, you know, have their concerns heard a different way. Have we considered perhaps combining that with eliminating, I guess, the, the deadline or the threshold of when they have to get that, that comment in or have some sort of workaround? Does that make sense?
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Mayor Protem. Go ahead.
No, I was done. You did not.
Okay. No, we absolutely have contemplated that. That is something that we definitely kind of workshop through our working group is what if you have a member of the public come through? And also just to, not to go too deep into the details with you, although I'm happy to, the temperature check station would be the first thing. We wouldn't put you through the whole security check if, right from the get-go upon entry, you cannot pass the COVID protocols. So what would happen in that instance is we would, of course, offer them different methods and modes to participate. And what we anticipate for every single meeting probably moving forward for a long time is going to be offering flyers with how people can participate, very similar, but, but less detailed than what we currently offer as our public comment guidelines document. When the city clerk's office is contacted by people who want to know, how can I participate? We have that document that we, I believe, developed for council way back in April of 2020. So it would be a somewhat more condensed version of that, telling them, here's how you can immediately participate. So absolutely, we wouldn't, we wouldn't in any way say you didn't pass the COVID test now and you can't participate. But the question of deadlines is one that I think that we will need to have eventually for, for other reasons. But certainly if you just showed up to City Hall, you had pre-registered, we knew you were coming, you were on our list. But for whatever reason that day, you couldn't pass the protocols, then we would of course offer you a different avenue to participate.
That's perfect. That's wonderful. I just didn't want to have somebody get caught in that situation. And I, this is not a question for you, Ms. Parker, but for my colleagues. One way we might be able to make both staff and each other feel more comfortable, and I think I sent an email to all of you requesting this, is we could go to Fat Cat's, you know, Saturday or, or Waterworld the Saturday before our meetings or Friday before our meetings and get COVID tested and just really have that belt and suspenders approach to, to doing everything we can to make sure we're fostering a safe work environment for everybody who works in City Hall that would come into contact with us and eventually for our public. And, you know, not requiring it, but, but voluntarily doing that. Regardless of what the rest of you decide, I'll be doing that for you. But I think, I'm just going to throw that out there. I think that would be something nice of, of us to do out of respect to each other.
But it's really not that bad.
Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Protem, knowing that, and if all seven of us get COVID tested and come up negative, would you be more willing to have your mask off?
As I stated-
Speaking or for the whole meeting?
Either.
For the whole meeting, you're not in compliance with the health orders.
Okay, well then, when you're speaking?
That's where I was thinking, whether or not the council wants to go with the speaking part, I'm not overly concerned about. Because as soon as you finish speaking, as Counselor Seymour talked about, he can put it back on because he's no longer talking. And I don't know that there's a big disagreement there. I think there's a concern of whether or not you are complying with the health orders other than that one exception. Because right now, the only exception to that is to remove the mask when you're dining, as we are all aware of, for the time you're at the table. But could we make an exception to that? I think we have that ability.
And that's fine, Mr. Mayor. I was asking actually Mayor Protem on that.
Well, since it's not going to be compelled of people, no, I would still like us to keep masks on. You know, if it was compelled, everyone who would be in the chambers was going to have a test and we'd all bring our negative test result, but that's not the case. So I think I'd still like us to have our masks on. And again, I defined it as a belt and suspenders approach, being doubly cautious. At least for phase one.
Counselor Scully?
But I, but I'll chime in on that conversation a little bit. I would not be comfortable without masks, at least in phase one for sure, even if we're tested. Because you get tested and you still have to wait four days for results, three to four days. So I agree with you, Mayor Protem. I am willing to be tested every week or that we have a meeting. I'm happy to go and do that a couple of days before. But there's still that interaction in between where you can still become, you can still get the disease and have it and not even realize you have it and then you're still spreading it. So taking the precautions with the masks, I think, just makes sense.
Other comments? All right. This is what I think I heard, but we still have a decision on a return date that we still need to work out. I think everyone has indicated they are comfortable with the phased approach following what the staff has outlined. At least in discussion, I think people are somewhat comfortable that if you are speaking for the period of time that you are speaking, you could lower your mask. But as soon as you're done speaking, your mask goes back on. That would still keep us pretty well in compliance with our state, federal and Health Department regulations as well as our own regulations for wearing a mask. We look at the target date. You've heard the comments from the city clerk and from the staff. We're probably looking, in order to get the support staff in there, we're probably looking at 30 days out. If you look at 30 days out for the first meeting, to give them time to get that, that would be the April 12th meeting. That would also ensure that we've had a chance to do the other one that people were requesting with the HVAC. There should be no question that that would be done as well, adding to the other level of comfort. I think it's still a question of how far out we want to go. But if they need 30 days to get the staffing up from our contract employees, that would be the first meeting after that 30-day period is up. And to the last question on council direction, we have, we've had taken a majority of people have said they want to continue to do the study sections remote because the public is not involved with us as it is. Any last comments? All right, Ms. Parker. I think you're controlling a little bit of it. If there's an opportunity to bring the contract staff in sooner, we would like to know that.
Certainly.
That we can adjust that. But at least, Ms. Opie, if you can try to do what you can to push the completion of the HVAC system before we come back in, again, do what you can. I know, I don't know if Barbara can still hear us or not. I don't see her on camera anymore. Mr. Tripp, you know where it is. So we would have a, hopefully we'll have a solid target date of April the 12th, being back in council in phase one. And if ever, anything works out that we can move in sooner, we would try to do that. Mr. Demont?
I just had a quick question for Mr. Tripp. Counselor Seymour made a good recommendation that I'd like to, to explore as far as coming into City Hall and checking out what, what's been done so far. What would I need to do in order to accommodate a trip in? I don't want to break any of the protocols that are there. Haven't been in for a while. So is that something you would like me to schedule with your office if I want to come check it out? Or how would one of us go about that so we can see what you've done so far?
Yeah, Counselor Demont, I'd suggest maybe coordinating Cody. We do have a requirement when anybody comes into City Hall right now, that they go through some protocols, which basically is a soft temperature check and filling out a little form. But, you know, we do that. That's simple, but we can do that. It's more a matter of scheduling it when somebody can, you know, maybe give you a bit of a tour, which we'd like to do. So if anybody would, wants to do that, you know, let us know. And between the clerk's office and Cody, we can get that, we can get that coordinated.
Great, thank you very much.
For sure, for sure. And Mr. Mayor, I do need to clarify one thing. I don't know that we know for certain what you've decided on masks. And the only reason I would ask you to, to maybe clarify that tonight is that our current city ordinance on masks would not actually permit removing masks while you're speaking. And, you know, I realize that that's not consistent with the state order, I believe that's the case, that does allow it for a- uh that does allow it for assembly, for speakers with during an assembly. And I would want to come back to you with a amendment to our local ordinance to make sure you were in compliance with that ordinance. Uh and so if you are going to permit, uh if you if you're agreeable to removal of masks while you're speaking, I need to deal with that uh ahead of, ahead of uh, you know, your first meeting.
I think that um what I've seen, and I'm watching reactions from eight people, that the ability to remove it while you're speaking is a desire. But as soon as you're done speaking, because you're still segregated, you have your shields and everything on, you put the mask back on, which I think Counselor Seymour indicated, he was comfortable with that, and that was a a piece that he was bothered with, at least uh we'll do that through phase one. I've seen a bunch of heads in different places going up and down. So if we need to modify it to allow council to remove theirs, or staff, if they're at the microphone, to remove it. Part of the other thing I think people are looking at is, I'm trying to see your face, and if you have a hearing impediment, you're watching people's mouth, trying to pick up on some of the things they're saying. And without being able to see it, it makes it awful hard to hear. When we're here tonight, everybody can see our faces because we're remote. So my suggestion, with council's approval, is that we have you modify the order to allow us, while we are speaking from the dais, or as a staff member. If a person who is coming from the public is going to come to the dais, I'm sorry, to the podium, since we're not offering cleaning after each one of those, I would say they need to keep their mask on. Because I can't control how somebody might infect somebody else. So that would be a a bit of an issue for somebody coming in. But they have three other options, how they can provide testimony without having to be at the podium. Any objections from council?
I'll just restate, I'd prefer that we keep masks on for the whole time during phase one. Um I I I'm, would be more comfortable with that, but um it looks like I am in the minority, so.
I I als- I also would be more comfortable with that. I agree with Mayor Protem, but I understand that I also might be in the minority.
Well, not, I I understood, too, my my apologies for jumping in, but I I understood, too, in phase one, that that, you know, I said, hey, I'll I'll leave my mask while speaking. I prefer not to, but if that gets my colleagues there, whatever it takes.
Okay, any other comments? Because right now, I'm looking at it as a split. We've got three people said they're willing to leave them on. I've got heads going up and down from a couple of others that they wanted to take them off. Preferences, Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh I prefer being able to take them off, and much to your point, um really good point. Uh I've been asking for ADA equality for a while now. Uh and to your point for uh having masks off, the ability to read lips is important for those who cannot hear. And we don't have any options as far as technology goes on our uh streaming that allows for any kind of interpretation of words. And so if we're to do that, there needs to be, legally needs to be uh some ADA compliance with that as far as providing that access, because even though they're in the minority, it provides, we've been talking about inclusive inclusivity and equality uh in our community, and even though it's a minority group, there are lots of people that have levels of disability in that regard. And so with that, um I stand and have stood on not wearing a mask while speaking.
color balls? We're good.
I, yeah, I, just for the comfort of my colleagues, I would wear a mask while I speak. Um if that gets us into phase one and we're meeting together, I guess I would um I would wear that mask, even while I'm speaking, if we can get, go ahead and move this forward and get us together and everyone's comfortable, so.
Counselor Demont?
I prefer not to wear the mask while I speak.
All right, I'm comfortable with a mask because I have issues at my home that I need to make. I have to take care of. Um and I just don't want to expose anybody else or or myself, pick up something. So right now, I have a majority of council that wants to keep the mask on, so, Mr. Tripp, you don't need to do anything at this point.
Thank you for clarifying that, Ms. Mayor. And counsel, thank you for uh your your attention and patience with us as we work through it. I'm really proud of the work the staff's done and uh um we look forward to being ready as soon as we possibly can. If if the date looks like it's going to be any better than that thirty days, we'll let you know right away.
Okay. Is there any other business before the city council tonight?
No, sir.
All right, I have everything uh show that we are completed, it's now eleven twenty-three. Ms. Scully, you skated by again. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are done at eleven twenty-three tonight, as for the record, and we will see all of you. Each of you has appointments tomorrow, as I recall, in regards to the upcoming activities. Uh keep in mind that we also have two weekends of activities coming up next month, two Saturdays and a Sunday that are on your schedule, so make sure you've checked those. Uh so if you have questions, you can get back to the city clerk's office. Everyone, have a good night. We are adjourned.
Good night, all.